I like your haircut, Jeff. You got a haircut?
I do, man.
Yeah, let's see that. Hey, Shadrica.
Yeah.
My son, Lee, Ian, Allie. All right. Hey, good evening, Little Rock and beyond. Thank you for taking some time out of your busy schedule to join us for our normal agenda meeting. Before we get into our agenda meeting, we will have our special meeting and with that, y'all, it will be pretty short with our special meeting and then we'll go into our agenda meeting. So first, welcome, welcome, welcome. I know high schools are having their open house this evening and so to all of our high schools that are having their open house, yeah, welcome. We will start off with our pledge and we will have Director Johnson lead us in pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Intended to be a one nation, united all, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you, Director Johnson. Director, morning. Will you open up with a something of inspiration?
Oh, my God, thank you. Testing, one, two, can you hear what you're testing?
Use the handheld mic, please.
Hey, well, I'm so glad you called me. Thank you. Hey, everybody, I'm glad to be amongst you beautiful people on today. I'm feeling very energized, so my message this week has been to be self-aware, all right? So we all go through a lot of things and sometimes we don't realize how it affects how we behave in our careers and our relationships, but when we do become self-aware, we have to then put action to undo those subconscious traumas that we've done of, that we've dealt with in the past. So overall, the message is be self-aware, do some digging, and understand that you don't got it all together, you're not always right, you're not perfect, and it's actually okay.
It is okay. All right. All of that, let that need a moment to pause so everybody could let that resonate, marinate. Okay, so again, you guys, thank you so much for taking the time out to join us in our special meeting. We will go ahead and go in, well, first, let me say this, you all. You guys noticed that Superintendent Porter is not with us this evening. He is unable to be with us. However, I know he is probably watching or listening or right where he is. And so with that, we have Mr. McGee with us today and, yeah, and we're getting ready to get into our public comments. So with that, are you ready to read the public comments first?
We're ready, Madam President. Thank you so much. And thank you, board members, and to our community and stakeholders. We do have some public comments. We do have some there by Zoom. The first one that we have, I'm going to call is Ms. Nye Carpenter. Nye Carpenter. Ms. Carpenter there, Ms. Veronica McLean. Ms. Veronica McLean. So we will come back to her. Mr. Colton Gilbert. Mr. Colton Gilbert.
Yes, thank you all so very much for meeting with me today. I apologize for not showing my camera, having my camera on, but I am here to discuss safety in the schools and the last few days, Monday and Tuesday, for professional development really put teachers in somewhat compromising situations. There are people around the district who feel like Tuesday was a super spirited event and we're going into tomorrow and we don't have testing at every school. There are some schools that will allow their teachers to be tested. There are some schools that won't allow their teachers to be tested. There are teachers who had to work during their lunches for what was called a learning in lunch and our fear is that the personnel policy manual is not being adhered to, the Ready for Learning Plan is not being adhered to, and it will only put the lives of educators and students alike at risk. And I think it is pertinent that the board be aware of what things are going on, not necessarily just from one perspective or another, but a perspective from the educators who are there day in and day out, who are essentially putting their lives at risk and being told that we can't, that we have to work through our lunch, being told that we have to deal with other things that are direct violations of the Personnel Policy Manual. And so for all these reasons, I come to you saying, asking that we look at school safety in the schools. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Ms. Veronica McLean.
Hello. Thank you for the opportunity to share today. Just have a couple of things. One, I just, and I don't really think that our board is going to vote against universal masking in the schools. What I want to address, you know, hopefully y'all vote for it. I don't see you not voting for it, but I want to address kind of another concern and that's taking some bold steps that, you know, asking the board to take a bold step, you know, whether or not you have permission to do so. Cam Patterson came on today on live television and talked about how dangerous this is going to be to open these classrooms. We, I don't feel like we're prepared. I think this week completely proved that point. When we had teachers being put in danger, when we had some teachers refusing to mask, I don't see how this can be safe for the children in the district. With that, I'm asking the board to come together and write a letter requi-
We can't hear you, Ms. McLean.
Abuse and the panic and the anxiety that our teachers are experiencing right now is going to really impact our schools in the future. This is becoming a mental health emergency as well. And I say that knowing that, you know, a lot of y'all may not agree with me there, but in my daily practice, I can see the trauma that teachers are experiencing and I have teachers reaching out to me on a regular basis. They are terrified and it may not be all of them, but there's enough that I think that this is a problem. I know that children need to be in schools, but I would really like to see the board make a really bold statement today and say that before the governor or the city or whomever starts doing some real mitigation efforts, we can't protect the kids if nobody else is trying to protect them outside of the schools. And when we bring them into the classrooms, whether they have masks or not, we're still going to see a high rate of spread. And we have teachers that have unvaccinated children at home. We have every student under the age of 12 that's unable to be vaccinated and, you know, we have a high rate of cases at children. I know school's important. I'm not saying shut it down, but is pivoting back and forth really going to be the best thing for them right now? So I thank you for your time and also please, please consider coming together immediately and demanding more action from our state leaders. I know that we don't like rocking the boat with the state, but we can set a trend that might save our hospital system.
Thank you. Ms. Joyce Springer.
Okay, I'm here with masks down to Dr. Porter, President Hatter, and members of the board. Good evening. It is a pleasure for me to come before you this evening. I am happy, happy glad to see that we have a board back in place that hopefully will be available to address the needs of the people locally and not be under state control. We've waited for this for more than five years and I'm so happy to see that. And in addition, I would just like to thank the board for taking the bold step on last week to address the Act 10002 related to the mask mandate. That was a law that I did not vote for. I thought it was a poor decision that was made by the legislator that did that. And so we had to, I thought it was just, you know, terrible, a very callous move for the members of the committee not to address the call by the governor. So I thank you all for taking that bold step and taking it for the court so that we could see that what was in place was not constitutional and that there are other ways to address the situation. So thank you all so very much for that bold step. I indicated that I wanted to talk about ESSR. I don't know if you all know that I'm on the Budget Committee for the Legislature, Joint Budget Committee, and I'm aware that there's over $500 million available to our schools here in Arkansas. I'm sure you all are familiar, based upon the American Rescue Plan, that there are funds available based upon ESSR, Title I funds. And so hopefully those funds are available to address what COVID has done this past year. And so my question to you all is, is whether or not you have identified staff, whether or not you've implemented evidence-based strategies to address the decline in academic achievement of the students. I know all across the state, I haven't seen any articles written here lately, but I've heard that the results of the testing this past season have been detrimental. I mean, they've been terrible, for lack of a better word. So hopefully you all have things in place to address students' social, emotional, and mental health and, most important, their academic needs. So hopefully you have some people in place to specifically address that because those funds are available. And I would hate to see for those funds to just sit there and no one make an application for those funds and then they be returned to the federal government. So remember, I'm not sure how much has been specifically allowed to-
Your three minutes. Thank you.
Oh, my, oh, three minutes. Oh, may I just say one other thing?
No, ma'am, I'm sorry. We only allow three minutes.
Well, okay, well, I'll write you all then. You know, seems like to me, okay, that's fine, but I'll write you all and tell you all about the school construction that's taking place. I think that you all need to be aware of the settlement agreement in the case back in 2017. So you all need to make sure you prioritize-
All right, thank you. We've got to move on to our next one. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, State Representative Joyce Springer.
All right.
Manvek Matia. Manvek Matia. Ms. Nye Carpenter.
Hi, I'm here. Thank you, board, for letting me speak today. Can you all hear me? Okay, sorry, I'm not used to Zoom meetings. I just wanted to, I submitted a comment a couple of weeks ago about the, trying to bring the mask mandate back into school or early, I was supporting the School District Challenging Act 1002. I'm a pediatric respiratory therapist and a mother of an unvaccinated child of Little Rock School District. She is under the age of 12. And I just wanted to say that during the 2020-2021 school year, the state followed the COVID-19 guidelines of the CDC. And during that time, hospitalizations at Arkansas Children's Hospital was few to none for children who were positive for COVID, positive for Flu A, Flu B, and any other respiratory virus at that time. We were really slow. But now, since the state has removed the mask mandate and autonomy has been given to parents, both parents and the students, to make a choice and their decision on how to prevent the spread of COVID-19, with this autonomy, hospitalizations are up in children and children with COVID-19 and other respiratory viruses. We are very busy at work. And with that, I just want to say that these children who are unable to get vaccinated, they're very vulnerable children. They were safer last year during school, the 2020-21 school year, because of the mask mandate and good hygiene practice, I believe, because we saw fewer hospitalizations during that time. And I believe that's because the state had implemented those guidelines. So some parents may not agree with the School District challenging the state Act 1002, but wearing the mask along with good hand hygiene works at keeping children safer and prevents the spread of COVID-19 and other respiratory viruses. In return, you will see fewer, lower days missed from school and less days missed from work. I just wanted to point that out and just respond to, or give my opportunity to give my opinion on that. So thank you all today for allowing me to speak with you all and hear my opinion as a respiratory therapist who are, who is in the pediatric field and taking care of these children at this time. So thank you.
Thank you, Madam President and members of the board. That concludes all of our in-person Zoom comments. We do have some comments, 30 comments that were written. We will read a few of the comments and then the rest of the comments to our public will be posted and uploaded on our district website. So, Madam President, a couple of comments that are written regarding the mask mandate. This is from Brittany Stagler, and she writes, "As a parent and pediatrician, I am urging the board to make the best decision to keep students, teachers, and staff safe this school year by making masks mandatory for all. Masks are a proven and simple way to mitigate the spread of COVID-19 with numerous studies to back this up. Unfortunately, misinformation and politics sensation have led some to believe that this isn't the case. I have seen firsthand the devastation the disease can have on children, even healthy ones. It is expected that our children have a safe place to learn and grow. We expect the schools to do this simple thing to keep our children safe while they are in school." From Ms. Sonia Patel, she writes, "As a parent of a 10th grader who has a chronic medical condition in Little Rock School District School and is practicing pediatrician, I request the board to mandate masks in schools. We are seeing many kids severely sick and on ventilation. It is our responsibility to protect our children who are very vulnerable at this time. I hope the board makes the right choice by mandating masks and taking a step in the right direction to protect our children. We cannot let them die." This is from Beth Mecca Alpine. "Four out of five of my family is vaccinated and we will be wearing masks at school and public places to protect our nine-year-old family member. I taught elementary music last year in a mask and saw no adverse effects on my teaching or student learning. It was the best protection we had when playing socially distanced games or having discussion. Did my teaching change? Yes. But did I make it work? Yes. Did the students still enjoy music in school? Yes. Masks work and I will encourage everyone to wear one." Just a couple of more. This is from Alex Rogers. "The district should let the students determine whether to require masks. A scenario for one school shouldn't dictate the rule for all. With the current spike in cases, most parents will likely send their kids in masks. Masks in the classroom are appropriate, but they are not safe outside. Considering the hot and humid Arkansas temperatures in August and September, requiring kids to wear masks while acting on the playground is more dangerous for kids than contracting COVID. We know that kids can suffer significant harm and death from activities in excessive heat. Restricting their breathing adds to the risk. Parents should decide for their child whether they should wear a mask outside." And the last comment here, the last comment here, Madam President and members of the board, is from Edward Stowell. "Only vaccinated kids should be allowed back into school for in-person learning. Only vaccinated adults should be allowed to work in the school. All others should be required to do distant learning. What good does it do for me as a parent to have my kids vaccinated, wear masks, and keep socially distant if the school won't protect them? They get COVID and come home and infect my younger kid who cannot be vaccinated. And for those who, and for those that say I can choose to not send my kids to school and have them stay at, stay home, I say back to you, you cannot keep your kids home. If you, you can keep your kids home if you don't want to vaccinate or wear masks. The school is a community and it should be protected." Madam President, that is all the master, all of the written comments that we will read. Again, all of the public comments will be uploaded on our district website and given a copy to all of the board members. Madam President, last thing on the comments, I want to remind our public that the cutoff time for the public comments is 1:00. We did have several comments that came in after the deadline, so there was three that came in. One was against the mask mandate. So I wanted to remind and make that acknowledgement. Madam President, that concludes all of our public comments.
Thank you, Dr. McGee. Okay, so our next on our agenda is the Ready to Learn Plan and that is an action item. So you guys, I do want to take a moment and express a level of concern, even though our mask requirement is in the Ready to Learn Plan, then I feel that it is an important enough issue to break it out. And so I would like to suspend the rules, right, to make that its own separate motion and so, and so we can vote directly on the mask requirement within schools. So with that-
I'm not even sure, I'm not even sure that we need to suspend the rules just because all of this was on the agenda. It was lumped together, but it was all there. So, you know, it's not that we're adding a new item or taking away an item. It's just, you know, someone making a motion on one, you know, breaking the issue into multiple motions. I mean, we can go ahead and do it. I'm just saying I don't, I don't even know that we necessarily need to suspend the rules to do that.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear or be sure because I didn't want to be in violation.
I think either way is appropriate, but I mean, I think that an efficient way would have to be, would be to have the discussion that you're having. And if we need to separate the motions, I think that would be appropriate.
Okay. So I see Director Adams is queuing up. So I, and the reason for that, I was over at Parkview and of course, it's their open house tonight and even before today. This is a topic that a lot of the public as well as ourselves have talked about. And so I just feel that it would be appropriate just to have that right at its own separate vote because it is such a popular item and then people want to be clear that, like, we did pass a, or right where we stand on masks in schools. Director Adams?
Thank you, Ms. Hatter. I would agree with Ms. Nolan. I think that a separate motion could be made since it's part of what we're doing. I would prefer myself to hear that portion of the recommendation from the administration and what the plan is and the rationale specific to the mask mandate and then before entertaining or taking action on it. So we could, I could hear that part. And then if we could then go back and hear the rest of the plan and then vote on that, that would make sense for me.
Yes, okay. Is there any other thoughts or does that sum up pretty much how we're thinking? Okay, so with that, we will go ahead and move into the Ready for Learn Plan. We will hear first about the mask within the Ready for Learn Plan and then we will go from there and break it out. And can everybody please mute, mute your mics?
I have my hand raised.
It's on the screen. It's just tiny. It's just hard to see.
Oh, I can't see that. Okay. Director Callaway, you are recognized.
I was just making sure that what Mr. Adams was saying to separate the vote or vote all at once.
Yes, ma'am. What Director Adams was saying was to, we could, to, we could separate out the motions. It is all on in one motion. And then instead of suspending the rules, we wouldn't necessarily have to do that. And Attorney Walker said either way is okay. However, we're going to hear from Dr. McGee from the Ready, Ready to Learn Plan on the mask and then, and then we will hear the rest of it. So on the mask, we, that is what we're getting ready to hear.
Okay, but I'd like to say, I would like to say that we do need to split the masks from the rest of that because I see a lot of problems in the, in the Ready to Learn.
Yes.
But the mask can go ahead and be passed or voted down or whatever. I think that's what needs to happen.
Yes, ma'am. I, I agree with you. Dr. McGee?
Thank you, Madam President and members of the board. I will say, before I go into the Ready for Learning, the mask portion of it, that this plan is a living document that at any time we can make the changes in the plan as we see fit from the Ready for Learning Committee as well as the Joint Committee with the Point of Contact. So with that being said, I'm not going to go into the purposes, but I do want to acknowledge our committee. We do have a very diverse committee of teachers, administrators, medical providers, as well as parents and students that really took heed and took very hard and I want to compliment them on the work, coming back together again and having discussions, breakout sections of the committee to make sure that we would do what's best for all of our students and our staff. So with that, the components here of the Ready for Learning Plan, something that, that was in our plan last year, we felt the need to keep them. So with the mask mandate, what we are recommending, that we are proposing that we require all masks for all students to wear a face covering, including pre-K. Pre-K right now, technically, is set at the age of three. And I know that, and let me also say that every board member, after speaking with you yesterday, had very valid points and that we tried to take in consideration into our plan. So with that, the mask mandate, we want to make sure that all students, as the students specifically, would wear the mask when they attend school or school functions. That's the indoor. And we ask the parents to ensure they have a mask. However, we are prepared to give masks to students who do not have one. After 60 days, we will revisit this plan. However, let me also lift up, if we look at the data and review the data before 60 days, that we can come back and actually ask the board to amend this plan, this mask mandate and the plan as well. So the expectations for students, we know that there are concerns with masks for, this is only for the indoor. So with that, there are some expectations that we will allow some removals of the face masks. That's when they're eating or drinking, if they have a medical condition, or if their specialized behavior or individual educational plan requires them to. And outdoors, we are not recommending students to wear a mask outdoors. We want them to be able to take their mask off, but we still want to encourage everyone to socially distance. And we do want to make sure we, we put in that every unvaccinated people and students who are not vaccinated, that they try their best to wear their mask in a crowded area. From employees, indoor, they can take their mask off if they are eating or drinking or they have a medical condition. We know that there's a very valid point that was made about letting the mask down for a specific instruction, especially during our literacy piece of that part. But when teachers are outside, we encourage them not to wear their mask. So that actually concludes the mask portion. If you want me to stop, Madam President, here, or you will?
Yes. So what we'll do is open it up for a discussion and because I think I heard Director Adams asking about the approach in the, around testing and then what is that protocol. So can you address his, his question when he was speaking about that, like the testing sites? Do we have, I guess, and I'll add it- Like the testing sites, uh, do we have, I, I guess, and I'll add it, or think, um, do we have testing sites in the district? I know we have clinics and, um, health clinics within our districts. And so do we utilize those health clinics to be testing sites?
Our director of nursing is going to come. We do, our, we will have testing sites in every site of our schools, we're trying to plan that. So let me stop and let our director nurse come.
Do we want to talk about that during the rest of the Ready for Learn, since it's not masks?
Well, it was a part of his, um, question, so I was just trying to close, close it out to bring it back onto masks, since I said we can talk about it.
Ms. Heather, I, I may misspoke, or something, that was not part of what my comment was about, the testing part. It was just about separating the mask part out from the rest.
Okay.
So, so I don't, I don't have any objection to dealing with that later.
Okay, do we have any questions pertaining to just masks, our, our conversations?
I do.
Okay.
So, thank you, Dr. McGee, I'm going to remove this quickly while we're speaking, but, um, so I have one suggestion that I would actually like us to make the change as we are voting on it tonight. Um, you said three years old and up for the pre-K. We do have, at least at Rockefeller, very young children. The CDC and AAP recommendations are two years old and up. So I would just change that to two years old and up instead of three years old and up. Um, and so that would be a suggestion, uh, to make a change when we vote on it. The other one is I just want to clarify, you said revisit at sixty days, but I just want to make clear that it, it does not expire at sixty days, correct? You would have to bring something back to the board?
That is exactly our intention, in sixty days, we will bring something back to the board. We're setting a sixty day expiration to come back to decide the next steps. That's what we're setting.
So the expiration, that, go ahead.
Well, no, that's it, that's all, that's what I had.
Okay. So is it a sixty day ex- expiration? Because that's a sunset.
At sixty days, we will come back to the board. Uh, superintendent and the, uh, wanted to make sure that we have a six, a timeline, six days to come back and have a recommendation to the board on the next steps. Again, however, we will continue to look at the data. And if it's less than sixty days that we see, then we will come back before sixty days. But definitely by sixty days, we will come back to the board.
Good deal, thank you.
Yeah, so you mentioned it's been brought up about, um, allowing mask breaks during certain parts of the instruction. Is our policy allowing for that?
Well, there was a suggestion that was made by a board member, um, on this, um, we want to continue to be transparent. Yes, we did look at that.
Okay.
But we are open to that because there may be, uh, I mean, if that's, if that's what the board wants to do for a specific, but right now it's a stand that we took it out for specific instruction.
Okay.
We just said when they indoors, they will keep the mask on.
My understanding is, um, teachers have been provided or should be provided for the mask with the clear mouth, so the students can see them when they're teaching the literacy instruction?
Correct.
Is that correct?
That is correct, and we are in the process of ordering more face shields or those face clear masks.
Okay, okay. So this policy, if we are inside the classroom, everyone will wear their mask. Teachers can remove them when they're alone or eating.
Correct.
Okay, just to be clear.
And I also heard you say students that are, um, having instruction and, and they, uh, they're able to remove their mask then when they're doing literacy, uh, earlier, or earlier? What did you say, earlier?
Well, I said there was a suggestion that was brought up that was mentioned about teachers allowing students to let down their mask during specific instructions such as the literacy.
Okay.
However, this would be the board's call, we would, we would certainly support either way. However, the committee wanted, felt like you need to keep the mask on for all indoor.
Okay, and, and what is the teach, uh, have, have you talked to any of the literacy, uh, teachers or just teachers in general, particularly between that K three, um, area of knowing when they are learning how to read and speech? And, I mean, because I know in Sped, they have the, the clear mask. But until everyone in elementary get the clear mask, like how would that work? Or have you talked to any of the teachers?
We have, the only teachers that we've spoken with that had dialogue are the ones listed on the Ready for Learning Committee. Uh, I think several of them are elementary teachers.
Okay, got it.
I spoke to several second and third grade teachers that teach reading, and they said the mask didn't hinder it. Um, that they used the mask with the clear, or they had YouTube videos that were provided in some of their training. Like, you know, they share resources with each other. They didn't feel like it was a hindrance, um, but-
Okay, well, well, the good thing is that-
I guess that's something we can reassess.
Yeah, but we'll say on the Ready for Learning Committee, several teachers said it was not a hindrance on the committee.
Good deal, okay, Director Wood, I think you lean in, were you going to say anything?
Uh, I, I, I would be in favor of a small exception that would allow, in fact, I, I think the language that I've heard floated around uh, from those who were engaged in the discussions was, quote, "during specific momentary instructional needs." And I, I would certainly be in favor of allowing teachers and students during specific momentary instructional needs, as needed, to lower their masks and be encouraged that they could do that to achieve the academic goals that, that are being pursued. We, we had a year of learning loss last year. We had a, a reduction in our literacy rates by six percent. And I, God, hope that we do not have another year of literacy loss in, in our school district. Our, our numbers were already low, now they are, they're really low, and we can't do that again. And, and I'm not saying, I'm not arguing with anybody that, that masks are or are not a hindrance. What I would like is for teachers and students to have the freedom that when it helps them demonstrate and learn, that they would, that they would have a guilt-free opportunity to do that in a specific momentary instructional need.
Do you have any other thoughts on, on that, Director Johnson?
I have a question. School starts Monday, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Are we prepared to hand over for two-year-olds, three-year-olds and four-year-olds? Do we have masks available that would fit?
Children mask?
We have, we do have that available to hand out, okay.
Good deal.
And let me also add that the state, you may have heard the governor and, uh, has already said that he's shifting the N ninety-five masks, including masks for the smaller kids, to all of the school district. And he's going to start, uh, with the Pulaski County School District here, the secretary, he mentioned that this morning, I will meet him.
Okay.
The school district in Central Arkansas.
Okay, uh, there was a, uh, Director Woods, uh, was, was that an amendment you were trying to make to that? For the small instruction, I'm just trying to make sure, uh, I captured what you said.
Yeah, I, I'd be happy to make it that way if, if the board would allow me to. And then we can all go on the record as to whether or not we support that.
Okay.
I mean, we, at this point, we don't have a motion on the table.
No, no, it was-
Um, so that would have to be made, I think, as part of whatever motion. Um, and I, and I'll also just say, since we're discussing it, um, I am going to oppose that, um, change. I think it's, you know, I, I understand where you're coming from, I, I totally understand the concern there. Right now, due to the extreme concern that, you know, we have about the spread within schools, I think that the medical professionals and the educators that were on that committee are recommending that we don't include that exception. Um, and that is something that, we're revisiting this at sixty days. We may be at a different place in terms of our community spread at sixty days. That may be a reasonable change at that point, but for right now, I'm going to go with the recommendation as it stands.
And it did sound like, uh, Dr. McGee said that they had the, the flexibility to do that in the beginning. So it, it, did I hear you correctly when you said that? In, in small, in momentary?
In the initial, we, we looked and we discussed that. However, as a committee, we felt that we just need to go with the recommendation to keep masks on indoor at all times. So yes, it was highly discussed, uh, about lowering masks specifically for a specific instruction. Um, again, I was just wanting, um, you know, we're open, we're flexible, we will do and honor the board. We just want to make sure that, that safety of all of our students and staff, uh, is our top priority. And we feel like that we need to keep the masks on inside.
Got it, okay, so with that, okay?
So, so Dr. McGee, the, the shield, would the shield be, uh, uh, in, in place of the mask? Could that have a, 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 a good, uh, possibility of?
Let me bring up our nursing director, Ms. Jackley, uh, Jacqueline McEwen, she's going to come and address that question.
Thank you, Madam President and esteemed board members. My name is Jacqueline McEwen, the Director of Health Services. And, uh, to answer your question, the face shields, they're, they're great for covering over, but even when I worked at, uh, Children's Hospital in the emergency department, we still had to wear a mask and the facial covering because the facial has too much openings for the aerosols to go out.
Okay, so with that, we'll close out on a discussion. Is there a, a motion on, uh, the table to vote on the mask requirement for the Lower Rock School District? So we can break that out? Or does, okay.
I'm happy to make the motion that we adopt this mask recommendation, that students and staff wear the mask at all times at indoor events, um, school, class, event, whatever, if it's inside, they wear the mask with these outlined exceptions in the Ready for Learning Plan.
Is there a second?
Well, I'm, I'm, I would like to see it include two years old and up instead of three years old and up. So if we're, if we want to include that, we need to include it in the language of the motion. And so it's, it's up to you whether to-
Okay, so, so do I hear an amendment to the motion or an add to the motion?
Well, since I made the motion, I'm happy to amend it to two and up because that is also the Children's Hospital policy is two and up. So, um, I'm happy, let's amend the mask recommendation to include two and up and as previously stated, previously.
There's a motion with the amendment, is there a second?
A second motion.
Okay, any, uh, discussion? Okay, um, one thing I would like to point out just to the parents that may watch this or those that may share the information, uh, make sure you read the, um, the policy, um, around that because it does say, uh, if your child do not, uh, wear the mask, they will be transferred to digital learning. So, uh, that is in the policy. And then there is a disciplinary action for, um, staff that is also in the, uh, Ready to Learn, uh, plan. So just make, Ready for Learning Plan. So I just wanted to make sure I highlight that for, um, everyone who may not read it. So, closing it out.
Go ahead.
Madam President, I just wanted to make sure that we understand about athletic events indoor?
One second, I'm sorry. The, uh, because it's the board, uh, discussion, I just didn't want to, Director Wood?
Well, thank you, Madam President, so we have a motion and a second. And, um, it, you know, the, in front of the board is, is language that would exclude the language during specific momentary instructional needs. I would like to, to make that motion, uh, for the board to consider. Um, I don't know what the proper avenue to do that would be. Would it be to offer an amendment to the motion that's currently made? Or should we just vote on the mask mandate as proposed and then I could make a motion? And if it gets a second, then we'll go that route.
Okay, I'm processing, and I think what we'll need to do is, uh, and Attorney Walker, if you can make your way up, uh, I think what we'll need to do is finish out this motion because we have a second on the table with the discussion and, uh, and then see if we can get it, and then you will make your motion to entertain, uh, to see if it will get a second. What do you say?
I think that's okay to do, yes.
Okay, thank you, Attorney. Okay, yes, sir, so right now, we will get ready to close out the board discussion, but we'll hear from Dr. McGee.
Madam President, members of the board, we just wanted to make sure that the community and everyone understand about, this include athletics, events indoor. So we wanted to make sure, um, that this will include the indoor athletic events.
Thank you, thank you for pointing that out.
So, so let me just, let me ask you a question just for total clarity. So, so are we saying that for people, like a volleyball game, volleyball players will wear the mask?
If they are not performing on the court or they, we will want them to put a mask on sitting on the sideline. I think last year, we did the exact same thing last year. Uh, if the team is not performing indoor, such as a volleyball player that's not in the game, yes, we were asking them to put on a mask.
So if you're performing in, on the sports team indoors, then the recommendation would be to not wear a mask?
If they're, if they're actually participating like a volleyball, if they actually in the game, yes. We're asking that they can take off their mask.
Okay, so sixty day, by sixty days, we won't be into basketball yet, but we will do, be doing volleyball. I don't know if there's any cheerleaders and things like that at that point? So would, does this, how about, where, where do they fall in, in that?
Well, basketball usually doesn't start until, if I can, if I can recall from my coaching days, uh, roughly November. So we still have some time for that. I have not seen cheerleaders in a volleyball game. I'm not opposed, now, let me make that clear, I'm not opposed, or the drill team, but I have just not seen them.
So the only people in the next sixty days inside who, at an event, sporting event, who would be without a mask would be the people who were participating in the sport at the time.
Correct.
So the coach, the other players, the, the people attending, the, the referees, whatever, all those would have a mask?
Correct.
Thank you.
And also it stands out to any, um, activities. So even if it's like, I know Quiz Bowl is not within the next sixty days, but anything like a, a DI or anything like that, that will also require a mask. So we have closed out, do you have something that's before we can vote?
Yes, does this apply to buses? It would apply on buses.
Correct.
So, so one question?
No, I'm sorry, let's finish this. Does, does this apply to buses, you say?
Buses are included, yes.
Okay, Director Mason?
Now, we, we talking about outdoor, no mask, what about football?
We're outside.
So they are outside, um, so that's a great point, uh, they're outside now. As it stands right now, if they outdoors, we're not requiring them to put on a mask.
And that's CDC guidelines, they were saying that, yeah, okay, thank you. Closing out discussion, are, are we prepared, is it directly related to the mask?
It is.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
For the parents that don't read this, can you go through the progressive discipline? If a child does not do what they're supposed to do, how are we going to handle that? I think we got the rest figured out, but I, I'm not sure about that.
As I understand it, um, speaking with, um, some of the staff today, in the student context, I think is what you're asking, uh, the-
Attorney, can you speak up just a little?
Sure, 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 sure. The, the question was, if a student refuses to wear a mask, whether it steps to progressive discipline, is that correct? All right, um, the refusal to wear a mask would be considered insubordination, which is a category one offense, I think it's how it's categorized, um, which is a warning or, or counseling or, you know, being asked to comply. Repeated, um, repeated refusals on the same, uh, from, say, the same student would, um, put that into a, a level two offense, which would be higher sanctions and penalties, suspensions, et cetera. Um, and, and if it continues, it could go up, up the scale to further discipline, as, as I understand it.
I have a concern with that.
Uh huh.
Um, we cannot suspend children over not wearing a mask. I mean, I, I, what, I, I didn't read that in here. What I read is that, uh-
The, the, it, it's not written that way. It's what's written is that if there, if there's a, a repeated refusal, then it would be, uh, subject to discipline according to L R C D policy. And what I was just stating was the, was what policy is for, uh, section one offenses and section two offenses.
Okay, but, 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 but we just had a year of great learning loss. And we know that suspensions, um, contribute to learning loss. And so like, it's not an anti-mask thing, uh, but it is, um, something dealing with making sure that we are providing, um, our educational services to all of our kids. And what I read was they would be after the conversation, the meetings with the parent, the teacher, and then the parent, the teacher, the principal, they will be put on or transitioned to virtual learning. and then the parent, the teacher, the principal, they will be put on or transitioned to virtual learning. So I didn't read the suspension part because that is concerning.
Okay, and I understand that. I'm thinking, you know, I'm stating what's in the student handbook and those are worst case scenarios. Everything that you described, I think, you know, is the district's desire not to suspend. But everything that you've described is, are the steps that will be taken prior to, I think I'm thinking about, you know, when we get really, really far down the road on the same, say for the same individual. But what you just described is the district's preferred method of handling.
Okay, okay. Yeah, okay, I just read it, okay. So yeah, that's what it says. If a student refuses to follow safety protocols, including wearing a mask in the in-person learning environment, the parent guardian will be notified. And if the behavior continues, the student will be assigned to the virtual learning environment. So, and so like, there isn't a, it doesn't talk about the progression or even a reference to the student handbook with the category offenses. So I've read that as the district, or I mean, the school building would document how many times they have done it before they transition. And two, I would be interested in getting those reports because we want to make sure that it is not a site to misuse or abuse for behavior. And then we transitioning kids to a virtual learning. So that's something separate, but I appreciate you asking the question.
Hey, Vicki, I just, I share your concern about suspensions because obviously it has a detrimental impact on student learning. But it's not a mandate if we can't enforce it. It's just a recommendation if we don't have an enforcement mechanism. So we do have to have something that is there for when there is refusal to comply. Like there has to be some way to enforce it at the end of the day.
Which is removing them out of a physical environment and place them in a learning environment, which they may or may not succeed. So, and so I think that that is a consequence. Okay, are we ready to close out the vote? Okay, prepare your hearts and minds to vote. All in favor of voting on, yes, sir?
No.
Okay, all in favor of voting on the mask mandate as we have had in motion and discussion, all signal by saying aye if you're in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so that carries, it's eight. And Director Mourning stepped out to use the restroom. Okay, so now we will continue.
Madam President, could I make a motion?
Yes.
I would move that we amend the mask requirement that we just passed to allow students and teachers to temporarily lower their masks during specific momentary instructional needs.
Okay, there's a motion on the table. Is there a second? Okay, it didn't pass or get a second. Okay, thank you for that. Now we will move forward to the rest of your Ready for Learning Plan.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. So the rest of the plan, the recommendations from the committee. Again, please be mindful that these are all guidance here that we took based on from the Arkansas Department of Health and one that we left out, the Center for Disease Control and DESI. Signage will continue. You see that we're gonna do some, we even gonna, we must do our emergency drills. We gotta alter those in small groups, that's the biggest highlight here, and cohorts. The recommendation for limiting visitors to all campuses. I want to say that we, as a committee, said that principals will have the autonomy to decide who can come in their schools during the normal working hours. However, we are encouraging them to continue with after-school events and gatherings they like. The only caveat that we did ask for in the elementary classes, the schools, that because there's only one custodian that night, we did ask to try to limit their gatherings to like several rooms because the one custodian cannot re-clean the whole school for elementary. So the principals will have that flexibility to be able to have after-school events, including after-school tutoring and et cetera, whatever they choose. You see about the out-of-state, we're continuing to do our best to physical and social distancing. It's possible we're gonna continue to encourage that. And as always, we're gonna continue to do our best to try to provide the support to the social, emotional, other well-being of our students and staff. Some of the general disinfection expectations, we wanted to reemphasize and that the cleanliness has gotta be mandatory. So therefore, you see here that the workspace and some of the expectations here that we want to reemphasize, including the buses and everything. But however, we also, there's a checklist that's in your presentation that you click on that link. We have an expectation for all custodians to clean daily, including, we're talking about wiping down, disinfect, cleaning, mopping everything, then coming back and using the foggers to disinfect. So that's why we really emphasize that. And even in our principals' meeting, we did really emphasize the cleanliness and the expectation from the custodians. Again, the screening, we're gonna continue to screen here. However, we are looking to try to go digital for our screening. We realize that it'll be some of our staff members that's gonna have to use the paper. But we want to try to expedite what people can in and out of our buildings. So our Director Safety is working on getting that QR code to the schools.
I'm sorry. Director Callaway, we're still in the presentation mode. We haven't opened it for board discussion yet. Continue, Dr. McGee.
You see the incident communication guide. We really wanted to emphasize to our community and to our staff and students that how are we gonna identify those who have tested positive for COVID and be able to pivot quickly if we have to identify those students who we need to contact tracing. Again, some of our health protocols, we're still gonna continue to have an isolation space, a room designated for children or staff that come in, maybe ill. We're gonna continue to put them isolated. And I want to stop right here to really to gunhole here, the guidance. If exposed, probable close contacts and individuals who are fully vaccinated do not have to quarantine, and you see the requirements there. And if they also asymptomatic, this includes children as well. Those are eligible students who have been vaccinated. But those who do not meet that criteria, you see here, they would be in a specific room from others. The key to this is ten days if no test is taken and no symptoms are reported. Seven days if they have a negative test. We want to make sure that we continue to do our best to communicate our communication methods here. As always, we're gonna try to send out via email, district website, social media. Of course, we know that we have two instruction deliveries, onsite and digital. I will tell you that I do have the numbers, I'm sorry, I wrote them down. I wanted to make sure I emphasize that we do have digital numbers for K-12, that we do have a waiting list. And I know we have approximately 202 students on the waiting list, 128 for elementary, 74 for secondary. The expectation, and as Director Wood said before, we know that last year was a very difficult year. We gotta do a better job, we will do a better job ensuring that learning will continue. And therefore, this is gonna be a collaborative approach. Our parents will be our partners in this. But we also want to reemphasize student engagement. I did speak directly with, today with our Ignite digital and to all of our teachers. They've been, and the principals, they are being the Ignite teachers. And our principals have been reminded that student and teacher engagement must continue, regardless if we have to pivot or we are on-site or it's a digital. We gotta have, the engagement piece has gotta be, show that the teaching and learning will continue. And not just engagement, we want to have multiple sets of assessments. We want everybody to know, including all of our stakeholders, that these special services will continue. We wanna, we're gonna try, we're gonna continue to do all of our services as normal as much as possible. Meals, we will provide meals for students who are receiving their instruction digitally. Mr. Bailey and Child Nutrition and the principals have already worked out where the Child Nutrition Department is standing ready to arrange meal pickups and dates and time. Also, if we have to pivot, we are gonna have meal boxes ready. And then the school sites, again, with the same collaboration with Mr. Bailey and Child Nutrition and the principals standing ready to have a plan to minimize large crowd gatherings, including breakfast and lunch. And that includes maybe eating in the classrooms and having multiple lunchtimes to shorten those crowds. Again, the guidance for extracurricular activities. Let me, right here, the AMI days, we wanted to make sure to clear to our public and to the board that we, right now, we only have ten AMI days. DESI has assured us, and not just Little Rock School District, but all school districts, that they will work with districts who exceed those ten days. So, but they also indicate that if we can deliver the meaningful instruction, that will not count towards our AMI day. However, if we exceed that, they will continue to monitor and we can continue to pivot. Every time that we have to pivot, we have to put that in and confirm and consult with DESI on that. But they will look at that and work with school district if we need more days. In our conclusion here, we want to continue to encourage everyone to wear a mask and understanding the terminology and additional resources. Some of you may be aware that a while back, we brought Dr. Jessica Snowden from Arkansas Children's Hospital, who did a video and a presentation to all of our district and we invited the whole Central Arkansas region. We pushed that video out. We're looking at continuing to provide more information as we continue to try to get through this pandemic, but also want to address all the social, emotional help needs both of our students and staff by providing the facts. In our next steps, I want to encourage everyone that we stand ready to continue to pivot if we need and make adjustments from our living document, which is the Ready for Learning Plan. The Ready for Learning Committee meet monthly, beginning September the 7th. We will meet and appoint a contact. We will continue to meet weekly. At nine o'clock, we meet every Friday in here so that we can collaborate both, looking at the data so that we can make the next steps and be able to make data-driven decision what's gonna be best the safety of both our students and staff. With that, I think that's it. And I have, again, our Director Safety, Mr. Ron Self, and our Director of Health Services, Ms. Jacqueline McEwen is here with me to answer any questions.
Director Callaway?
I have several questions.
Okay, can you put them in twos and we'll put you in the queue? Go ahead, Director.
Okay, okay. Okay, first of all, what are the social distancing, if at all possible, protocols and expectations that are recommended with classroom accommodations that have already been made, for instance? From what I'm understanding, some schools, particularly the high schools, a couple of high schools have been, they're they're actually overwhelmed at this point. And I got this from a parent and they said they didn't see a way possible that they could socially distance. Now, between classes, I wondered this myself. How are you going to disinfect the best, particularly if you're in high school, middle school, we change classes? And how, how many custodians will be there? Now, I heard you say that there'd be one custodian there at night when they were having meetings and whatnot. But I don't, I really don't understand the whole process of not having a custodial staff other than the people who are supposed to be, the people that are supposed to be coming in that I thought were just gonna come in and clean up fair. And I understand that pretty much we have, they're gonna be doing everything. But how can we exist without the custodians being there?
Thank you, Director Callaway.
That's a really hard position to take. For instance, what if a pipe burst? I couldn't do anything with it, I had to call the custodian.
Okay, thank you, Director Callaway. I'm going to restate your questions. So Director Callaway's question is, how will the sanitation of desks and all that happen with changes in between classes? That was the first one. Did I capture that right, Director Callaway?
That was my second point. My first point was social distancing, how is that gonna be possible with at least a couple of high schools that are already, you know, over the top?
Okay.
How is that going, how is that gonna happen?
Okay, so is social distancing, sanitation of the desks after, in between classes? And the last one was about the custodial staff of just having one custodian in the building. So those are the three questions.
So thank you, Director Callaway, for your questions. With regards to the physical and social distancing, we realize that some of our classrooms are just not feasible to social and physical distancing. So that's why we're encouraging each school to do it as, if possible. But we cannot say that with fidelity, we cannot say with fidelity that we can social and physical distancing inside the classroom because the classrooms are just built too small. Mr. Bailey, you want to add anything to that?
Good evening, board. And Dr. McGee captured right. So that's the importance of the mask in the classroom because we can't physically distance in most of our classrooms like we need to, especially if they're capacity, it may be an AP class that don't have ten or fifteen kids, but they can space them out, the same thing on the buses. So if the space is available, you know, they've encouraged the socially distance. As far as the custodial, we don't have any sites that only have one custodian. And there may be one or two at night or something, they come in later, so they're tiered and we look at those schedules as well. But the principals, you know, kind of have that autonomy to suggest that they need, you know, additional resources. And typically, when we have an outbreak, we actually outsource it with our SSC custodial services to come in and actually after hours and actually clean the building. I think it was one more question about sanitation as well.
Yeah, it was the desk, cleaning of the desks in between.
Between classes.
So, and that's been left up to, somewhat up to the autonomy of the principals because they know kind of how the classes are changing. So they have, I mean, in this, in a pandemic, everybody has to take this as high priority, just like safety. You can have three security officers at a school, but they're not the full security of the school. So it's the adults that are there. So the teachers, and at times, I know some classes may even hand out wipes to kids just to wipe their desk down when they leave and drop it in the trash can. No central was doing that in the auditorium and some other places.
Park View was doing it.
Park View as well. So I mean, it's, I mean, it's all hands on deck during this time because you can have, I mean, you'd have to have hundreds of custodians in most buildings to make sure they're wiping behind everybody. But we're going about, it's two different steps. You have cleaning, which is wiping the surfaces down, and then they're coming back and sanitized later as well. So I mean, it's all hands on deck when you're talking about cleaning and sanitation.
Good deal. Thank you.
And I agree with that.
Sorry, Director Callaway, I want to put you back in the queue. Director Nolan?
Okay, I'll do two of them and get back in the queue as well because I've got multiple. So the main one, and I'm just gonna kind of let you all know that I would either like to amend this or do what Jeff did and we can go ahead and pass it and then I'll make a separate motion. I have a concern about the fact that our quarantine recommendation. I have a concern about the fact that our quarantine recommendation says that vaccinated, vaccinated people do not have to quarantine. I understand that that is currently in keeping with the CDC recommendations. I would suggest that we could be even more careful than what the recommendations require right now, because we, you know, we're experiencing this new Delta variant that, you know, does seem to affect vaccinated people somewhat. Vaccines are safe and effective, they work, they save your life. But I just am saying there's an extra layer of precaution we could take by including vaccinated people in that quarantine requirement, instead of, um, saying that if a person is vaccinated, then when they have a known contact, um, then they still don't have to quarantine. I, I think it would be more cautious to go ahead and include them. So, I'm gonna, um, probably just do it the way that Director Wood did. We can pass it as is, and then I'll make a separate motion on that.
Well, can I speak to that?
One second. Uh, Director Nolan, go ahead.
Well, I mean-
Your next question.
Okay, well, and I'll, I'll say, I have, um, that wasn't really framed as a question. I've already-
Yeah.
-mentioned it to Dr. McGee. Um, he made clear that they were trying to follow the current CDC guidelines. That's where this recommendation came from. I understand that. But, oh, did, would you like to respond? Go ahead. So, the only other thing about, um, quarantining, to keep it on the same topic, is I do have a question about how we will deliver education when a child has to quarantine. We talked about AMI days. Um, and AMI days seem to apply when an entire school would pivot. Um, and so, how are we going to treat it? I mean, is that child gonna be considered absent? Are they going to get online education at that time? How do we deal with a quarantine situation?
Thank you. So, no, they will not, the child will not be considered absent. We will continue to do, utilize Schoology. And the teacher and the student, I think that we have a memo, what, well, now we will have a resolution, that we have ready to send out. If we have to pivot in a classroom, as long as the teacher and the students continue to utilize our Schoology platform, doing that asynchronous piece, the teach, the student will not be counted absent per the commissioner memo. And we are not gonna, uh, dock the teacher. The teacher, as long as the teacher's able to continue to teach, uh, using their virtual platform.
Okay, okay, so-
What if, what if it's one student in the classroom, or two students in the classroom, and not the whole classroom?
It's the same. That is, that is, that is the question that came up this morning at our meeting, superintendent's meeting. It will stay the same. We're not gonna, the state is gonna support us with the state-reported absence of those students. We do not have to count them absent.
Okay, I have a, a question. This is really more about academics. So, it's, it is two parts. With, with, with the addition, the digital virtual academy night, the, the, the students that are coming in from their home school, are those being tra- cha- uh, tracked? Hold on, I can't talk with this. Are, are they being, uh, tracked? And then, like, the checks and balances of, of, no matter the support for, um, staff? How is, yeah, um, what's the status of the virtual academy? And what happens to the, the, the two hundred and plus students that are on the waiting list? Where do they, how will they get their education? Where are they assigned?
So, thank you for that. That's a great question. Let me start with the two hundred and two students that are on the waiting list. As it stands right now, we're gonna just have to encourage them to come to in-person. But please be mindful when we say digital, it has to, the numbers have to drive the teachers, uh, our student enrollment. Also, remember that we submitted our digital learning plan, that where we capped off our class size. So, we're trying to staff based on the student enrollment, and we still have to find teachers, some teachers. So, we're in the process of working it out to try to be able to accommodate, to collapse schedules inside the normal traditional schools, to be able to send teachers to help teach digital, so that we can be able to enroll those two hundred and two students. The executive directors for elementary and secondary, they are working on that schedule to try to get that done ASAP. But right now, they gotta be, they're offering in-person instruction, with the intent of trying to move them to digital and honor their request as soon as possible.
So, what happens, I mean, because in that way, we're almost like forcing our, our parents into an environment that, I don't know, they possibly don't wanna be in. So, what happens when, no, no, when they just absolutely can, can, cannot do that? Uh, what other options are there for those parents?
We are exploring other options right now, potentially even trying to outsource teachers, uh, for the digital.
Okay, so when you say, um, outsource, you, are you speaking of going with a vendor that have virtual teachers that are certified for the state of Arkansas, or what are you saying?
Yeah, they will have to be Arkansas licensed. We just, we're saying that we just have to, it's a waiting game. We're just trying to, that is an option that we have discussed in our meeting with the executive directors, my team. If we cannot move and get the students and honor their request digitally, then we're gonna try to come up with another plan to accommodate those parents with their requests.
Okay, and my last question to close this part out with my questions is, how long is, is this waiting game? How, how long are, are you planning on waiting, because nine weeks are gonna go by so fast? How, how long is, is that gonna be?
We have a deadline tomorrow to try to accommodate, to find out, we got teachers.
So-
That's our deadline, to try to see where we are with the staffing, the teachers. Because the teachers, uh, again, we need teachers in the digital. So, it's just, we're gonna try to expedite as soon as possible.
And so, the 12th, so tomorrow is the deadline for you guys. Okay, got it.
Uh, excuse me?
Okay, the 13th is, is the deadline. I'm sorry, thank you, guys. Okay, so, uh, Director Adams, and then Director Callaway, we're still in the queue, and then Director, uh-
But, you know what? I would appreciate the same courtesy that everybody else gets. I mean, seriously. Because I got a chance to answer, ask two questions, and other people ask more, and you skip all the way to something else. And I think everybody needs to be able to talk. But I've been saying, I would like to be, uh, have the same courtesy extended to me.
Director Callaway, we, we-
It's obvious it's not.
Director Callaway, we do extend that same courtesy. Uh, you did ask the question with, 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 with supporting, um, commentary behind it. And so, it does seem like it was only probably just two questions, but, but, but two, it was still, um, time expended. Um, and so, just trying to be fair, it's nine of us on the board. So, uh, Director Adams, and then Director Callaway. And then, we will, uh, spend, um, we'll have ten more minutes, and then, uh, we will, uh, close out the, uh, discussion. Director Adams?
Thank, thank you, Ms. Hatter. And, and this may be something that we'll talk some more about if, Ms. Nolan, if, uh, with the point that you brought up, because I, I'm actually coming at it from a different perspective, because I, um, for a couple of reasons. One is, I, I think that the point in the plan where it talks about under, under employees, and talk about individuals who are quar- who are vaccinated and asymptomatic, don't have to be quarantined. I think that if, if that's our plan, that that needs to be clear also in the student section, so that it's very clear. Right now, we don't have any incentives for students who are 12 and older to be, um, vaccinated. But one incentive that we do have would be to say, if you're vaccinated and you're asymptomatic, and you get exposed, you can still come to school. And you can still play on the football team and, and do your cheerleading and be in the band. And that's an incentive that follows the expert guidance and the CDC guidance, as far as I'm understanding. And I think, I don't, I wouldn't wanna take away that incentive, because I think that it's gonna improve our safety overall by getting, having more incentive for more people to be vaccinated. And I'm also would be concerned about, um, going beyond the CDC guidance, and that, because that would take away teachers and nurses and counselors out of the setting when, when that would be, not be necessary. And, and that could, I think, impact the learning that happens. So, instead of having a teacher who, who could continue teaching, then we'd have an experienced teacher, we have to get a substitute in, which is not gonna be the same. And so, I, I would see that from a different perspective. And I would actually think about, um, once we're done with this part, I would like to, um, offer a motion that we ask the administration to develop a plan and recommendation to come back to us for how to, uh, increase incentivization for students, 12 and older, to get vaccinated. I'm not sure the best way to do that, but I think we need to be as creative as possible. We've, we've done that for staff, we put money to that, which it feels very appropriate. But I think we need, part of the key to getting at a safer school and getting through this pandemic is getting everybody, and that includes those kids. And so, that we don't get those kids in the hospital, and we, and we cut down on the transmission. So, I think we need to, to do that. So, I'll, I'll be willing to make that motion after we're done with this part, to ask for, uh, a plan to be brought to us about how we can, uh, more incentivize students to be vaccinated.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Hutcherson, uh, did you capture what, uh, thank you. Okay?
Um, so, Ron Self, Director of Safety and Security, and also on the POC team, was on there last year. So, just to address a couple of things. One, um, that, we probably didn't make it real clear in there, but that's the exact same guidelines for students. Uh, so if they're quarantined and asymptomatic, they, we, I'm sorry, vaccinated and asymptomatic.
Just a clarity issue for me, make it very clear for everybody.
Yes, so that's, so that is the COVID guidelines. Um, so, keep in mind that if you go above and beyond what ADH and CDC says, now, we can issue that, but ADH has final say-so. So, we, we work at their hand. Uh, so, we work at their guidance, and we submit it to them, and they say, uh, so, I'll give you an example. So, we may have, our questioning may not have been correct, and we extended them out a day past. ADH will correct that and reduce it by a day, because they have the ultimate say-so on how long someone quarantines. We just kinda operate at the hand of them. So, we technically would not, they could override us. Now, we could say that they couldn't come on campus, but they technically wouldn't be in the quarantine, because ADH would have that final say-so, if that kinda makes sense. So, if we kinda, go ahead.
Okay, would, uh, the head nurse also have to share that same thought? Because, um, I, I, I thought maybe she would be the one to speak to that.
Thank you for having me again. Um, in regards to individuals that are fully vaccinated, all individuals, so students and staff, per the ADH guidelines, it does state, if you are asymptomatic, which means no symptoms, you do not have to quarantine if you are fully vaccinated. We are asking for proof of vaccination, um, to prove that they are fully vaccinated, and they have to meet the criteria. So, post-two weeks after your second dose, and no symptoms. However, we are also stating, if you have symptoms, you need to immediately isolate. So, if you start to have symptoms, you are not to come on campus, and we recommend testing. I was in a POC meeting yesterday with the state, and their recommendations are that if somebody does, is fully vaccinated, has symptoms, then they are supposed to quarantine or isolate for ten days. We use those terms kinda interchangeably, because until we have a test, it's not technically isolation. If we do get a positive test, then they're in isolation, but it would be for the ten days. If they do want to test, and if I need to repeat any of this, just let me know. If they do wanna test, we recommend, the, the CDC has guidelines, the ADH has not adopted them yet. They're saying if you're fully vaccinated and you're starting to have symptoms, they recommend testing three to five days after your last known exposure to whoever it was. If they come back negative with that, we are still talking about that. But they were saying that we could follow the quarantine guidelines, which if you go to the, the plan, do you guys have copies of these plans? Um, if you go here for quarantine, it does say that-
What page are you on?
Um, I'm gonna find it here really quick. So, I think it's page sixteen. It says, uh, persons who did not meet, this is if you're not, but we're, um, gonna be following the, um, the seven-day guideline for that. So, if somebody's fully vaccinated, they test, and they're negative. That is what they're talking about right now. It's still ongoing, there's no guidance beyond that right now. But it is, if you're fully vaccinated, no symptoms, you do not have to quarantine. If you do have symptoms and are fully vaccinated, you must isolate and recommend testing. Are there any questions with that?
No, you explained it, that, okay. Thank you, we appreciate you. Uh, Director, uh, Callaway?
Okay, thank you. Uh, nothing's listed in the plan, uh, about the quarantine numbers. Uh, will this be determined, reported, and communicated to the public? Have there been discussions about this? And now, we've already killed the masking issue, if I'm not, if I, i- i- if I'm still correct, that, uh, that there would be no punishment for them if they do not wear their mask?
I'm sorry.
Is that what?
Repeat that again, please.
Okay, you, you remember prior to, uh, now, this is a question I had after you and, uh, um, and Ali were talking.
Director Nolan, uh-huh.
Now, how, there's, uh, there needs to be a, 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 a punishment or something if they don't wear a mask? And, and you were saying that, okay, well, you don't think that they should be punished or be suspended or whatever. And I'm not thinking that they should, that they shouldn't have that as well. However, I'm just wondering what, how will you enforce it if you don't have, uh, if you don't have anything? That would make them, kids will not, unless they know that there are consequences.
Yeah, so-
They're gonna try.
So, with that, um, the consequence is, because there is a consequence. The consequence is them being, uh, transferred to online learning. And so, they're taken out of the physical learning environment and placed in a virtual learning environment. And so, that is the consequence of, of not wearing, uh, a mask in the school. And so, there is a consequence. Now, like, if you're talking about a punishment, uh,
No, a consequence is what I mean.
That would be a punishment. Okay.
Okay, now, for instance, we already got two hundred people waiting on this, uh, to get on virtual. How are you gonna do that? Now, uh, uh, i- i- if, if the consequence is to put them in a virtual situation, we, they will not be able to get in that virtual situation, because you got, uh, you have a waiting list for them.
Yeah, that's, and that's what Dr. McGee, Dr. McGee, chime in.
Thank you. Uh, so, Director Callaway, let me say that the consequence is there, uh, just outlined by our attorney regarding the mask mandate, if that's what we're talking, is speaking of, is that correct? So, the consequence is there. So, we will be okay with that, we will follow. And I wanna say this, that principals have been advised by the directors to treat this as a dress code with minimal, just trying to encourage our students. So, that, we're not even trying to even think about suspension. We're just trying to treat it as a minimal offense, try, so that we can try to encourage the safety. We're gonna have masks available to give to students. Um, so, that's where we are with that.
Okay, so, um-
Somebody loopholes.
So, with that, um, suspension is not an option. So, a- am I hearing you correctly?
That is the last option, and we're not even looking at that. It would take so many steps before we even get there with suspension. So, we're talking about multiple, multiple steps, uh, before we go there.
Okay, thank you for that. Um, and then the-
I'm sorry, I don't think, I didn't, I didn't hear an answer to Ms. Callaway's question, though, about what are you gonna do if the virtual queue is too full?
Yeah.
What are you gonna do?
So-
I'm sorry, I missed-
No, 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 I'm glad you circled around, because he's gonna mention that again.
So, again, what we have to do, the, the student enrollment has to drive the decision in terms of the staffing. Right now, as it stands, we're trying to narrow down, uh, to get some additional teachers in the ignite, so that we can accommodate the student enrollment. Please be mindful, again, I wanna say this. Remember, we submitted a digital learning plan that had to be approved by DESI. In that plan, we caps, we capped our class size, and we are at that class size now.
What is that cap?
You know, I don't have it in front of me, please forgive me.
Okay.
But, uh, but I will send that out to all of the board members in that, um. So, there is a, a class size that we have to honor digitally for the digital academy. So, we just have to be- So we just have to be patient. That's what, and I will say this again, speaking to the Ignite teachers today, we did tell them where the directors are looking at the master schedule, see how they can collapse classes. If we got some additional teachers within the district onsite that we can send to the Ignite to be able to teach those digital students, we will work with them. So we're just trying to, we just need a little bit more time to look where we are to address those 202 students that are on the waiting list.
Okay. And then I also heard you say that, like, you are also exploring the, is it SCC? You guys have vendors that, like, you use that have virtual teachers-
To outsource.
To outsource, or something of that nature?
Yeah. It's going to be, if we go there around with outsource, it will have to be, again, the teachers will be Arkansas licensed. So we're just looking at that, at that option.
Okay. All right. So with that, you guys, if you have more questions about the plan as you go through it, please reach out and, sorry, send, send your email to Ms. Horan, Dr. McGee. I noticed in here, when I was flipping, I highlighted Virtual Fridays. Are we doing Virtual Fridays? Because it's still in this plan.
No, that's the old plan. That, we're not doing Virtual Fridays. That is the old-
This is the one that was sent to me in the last attachment. This is, that's why I think there's so many questions.
I'm not for certain on that, but I'm not sure. But we will make sure we send the updated version. I'm not sure if anyone else got that version.
Okay. Awesome sauce. The next, so-
Yeah, I still have several questions on this. And, I mean, I understand that we need to move on, but it takes some motion and a vote to limit discussion on an issue. So if we can, let's just move through.
Wait, hold, let me re, since I was participating, I kind of got out of my facilitating role. So I just need to catch myself real quick, see where we're at. So with the learning, with the learning plan, it is in action. It was a two-part action, and we separated it out for the mask, and then now, you know, the rest of the plan. And so we're in the discussion portion of it. I mean, we, it's nine of us. We can be here for a very long time. So most, so is this something that, 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 that can't be emailed and asked?
Well, because we're about to vote on it. So it needs to be asked before.
Okay. But there's a lot of issues.
Okay. So the next one is onsite testing. This is something that is recommended. I know that we provided this at some schools last year, and I just wanted to make sure. I mean, I heard you all said that we would like to expand it. Can you speak to that? Because I think it's very important that we do provide that.
Yes, Director Nolan. So this year, my nurses came back on campus this week, and I'm so grateful for all of them coming back. We have some new nurses joining us. But we are going to have testing for asymptomatic staff at all schools. We are in the discussion for possibly expanding that at this point, but we are going to grow to have every campus to have voluntary staff testing with asymptomatic individuals.
Okay. And is there, is that just employees? I mean, we have students who may want to take advantage of some of that testing. Is there a way to make that available to students as well?
We do currently have in place that if we have students that are, get sick on campus and are unable to get to another location, they can come to my facility if they are sick and get tested. But that has to be coordinated, because my office staff, like, we would have to put on all of our gear, our PPE, and make sure that we are actually on campus to do that. So that would have to be coordinated, as long as, as far as asymptomatic students go. That is in talks right now. We would have to make sure parent consents. What does that look like? If, you know, our parents don't want their kids to do it this week, but they want them to do that week, and it takes a lot of legwork, and my nurses are the ones doing this right now. And we're having cases starting to increase daily. We're having to do POC on top of our other duties. So it's going to take a lot of consideration, but we are in the talks of it. It's not out of the picture yet, but it's just going to take some further discussion for that.
So is there a comprehensive, I'm taking it, it's not a comprehensive plan in place on how that will play out, because you guys are still in talks about what does that look like?
Yeah, it was brought to my attention this week. So we are, we are in talks of it, and we are trying to figure that out.
Oh, okay. How many more questions do you have?
Like, three board. So the next one was, you mentioned cohorts or cohort groups. I know that is something that was utilized in some elementary schools last year to try to minimize the number of students that each student is exposed to, the number of other students. And I don't know if that is something that is feasible to mandate across the district, but I just wanted to see if you could speak to, are we encouraging that? Is that something that we're trying to implement? Because it really does help limit the number of potential exposures.
No, what we spoke about was the emergency drills that we have to conduct this year. We've been urged in the commission memo to do them in smaller groups or cohorts. So the fire drills, active shooter drills, tornado drills, the earthquake drills, we would do them in a smaller group.
Okay. And I'm, so I'm not going to try to include this as a mandate in the plan, but I'm going to suggest that you all talk to your principals about encouraging that as much as possible so that we can keep kids in groups where they are exposed to the same students consistently and not every student in the school.
That's not possible.
Right.
Yes.
Well, we had Gibbs do it at the beginning of school last year.
Gibbs is-
High school, high school.
That's why I'm saying not mandate it, but I'm saying let's try to do it as much as possible.
I hear you. I understand that, but high school, that would be impossible.
For example, I know this is not high school, but for example, at some of our elementaries, they had, you're in the yellow pod, and you're in the purple pod, and you, you know, when you get dropped off, and when you get picked up, and at lunch, and at recess, you are with the same kids.
Okay. You're talking about for elementaries to introduce, to have that implemented at the elementary levels? Because in high school, that's going to be impossible with 2,600 at Central, 2,200 at South, 1,000 at Parkview, 200 at Hall, and that, like, that's not even going to, it might work at Hall, but it won't work at the other high schools.
I'm asking that we look at it as much as it's feasible, as much as it's possible. Let's try to work on that. The other one, and this is a big one, and I've heard it from so many people, ventilation. And what are we doing to address that? How, I mean, I understand that there are, you know, these are big projects. They don't happen overnight. We're not going to get this done before Monday, but how are we addressing that to try to improve it and make it as favorable as possible to limit the exposure?
Chief Kelsey's going to answer that.
I'd just say there's no silver bullet to that one. We've actually made contact with our facilities consultant, along with Tim Kane at DESI as well, to submit projects. So those projects underway, we did get, I think, one completed. That's Jay Fair. We've been looking at some of these actual units. We've been getting a ton of calls about the room units and trying to verify that they say what they actually are doing. So some of the technology is new. Some of it was helper filter. We actually have some quotes here, but before you spend $2 million, you want to make sure what you're putting out there is actually tested, and they're just not giving a false sense of, you know, something that is not doing. A few of them hadn't had the actual test where, tested with SARS II virus. So going through that process now. Hopefully, we'll finalize that within the next day or so. Asking a few experts to look at some of that technology that's being presented to us, and really want to look at the best. We just have, like, I have a unit back here as well. I'm not going to put it on camera, but it's one of the units that we're looking at, have looked at. But looking to make sure that third-party testing is a valid testing, that it actually going to eliminate what it's saying and doing. But we are actually getting started right now with some of those 10 units that we actually have planned. So those hopefully will be out for bid, and we can get those going very soon. But, you know, with everything going on with the pandemic materials and everything else, it's very slow getting here, so.
That's a no.
Good deal.
And this is the last one, I promise. And I, you know, I'm going to be, I'm going to be the bad guy here, and I'm going to say, we just passed a mask mandate, and we specifically did not include something to, like, to lower your mask when you speak. And so I'm just going to kind of respectfully request that we do the same thing, since we are requiring our teachers to speak with their mask on. And if we can't do it, maybe we need to revisit that motion that Mr. Wood made, because if it's, if it's something that we can adhere to here, we need to address it. So the last one is Ignite. You mentioned the numbers at Ignite, and this was included in Ready for Learning, so that's why I'm asking it here. But because those numbers have increased so much, does that mean that we are now adding assistant principals at Ignite, because the numbers have gone above the cutoff, the requirement for assistant principals?
No, we have, we have a plan to use the current staff that was hired, that the principal and that person will have the help. We think that we can cover that with the current staff that we have with the, for the Ignite. I think it's, I think it's assistant principal going to split between two sites, that is Terry and Ignite.
So this isn't something we would have to vote on as part of the Ready for Learning. We can move on. I'd love to talk about that more, because I do think that having that school grow so fast and try to do something new, this would be a good situation where we could add some additional support to them.
Okay. So I'll round it off with a question about academics. And it does, and it's really quick. I'm reading the Ready for Learn Plan, and I did double check. I do have the 21-22 school year Ready for Learn Plan that I printed off. On it, the language, it could just be a little, it is a little confusing. It says, with teaching, well, it says that along with instruction resources of their choice to develop lessons for both virtual and in-person students. So my question is, are we, or will the district think, is the district? I'm going to take my mask off, just because, yeah, I talk better without it. Is the district requiring teachers to teach both in-person and virtual students as it's listed in, on page 17 of the Ready to Learn Plan?
No, not in, no, to answer your question, no. The district is not expecting teachers to teach both virtual and in-person. We have Ignite teachers. The only way that that would happen if, again, as we stated about quarantine, if we have to quarantine our class, that's it.
Right. But then, like, that, but their in-person, but then that will all be one thing. They all would transfer in, into a virtual setting, the teacher and the students. So I just wanted to be clear, because it's not clear. It just, it just says that teachers will have their autonomy and support to utilize the district-provided, state-provided instructional resources, along with instructional resources of choice to develop both virtual and in-person, for their virtual and in-person students. And so, like, we are not asking them to do what they did last year in any way, shape, or form. Okay.
Well, except for if a student, not the whole class, but if a student quarantines, and that student still needs to receive education, but the whole class is still in-person, the teacher would, at that point, have to provide both, right?
And that's through Schoology, Schoology, the platform that they will be using throughout the whole year.
Right. But, right, I just want to make sure that, that, like, they are not doing the same, because Schoology is different, because if, because when they're online, they're using Zoom, they're using another platform to have a conversation with in Schoology. That is right where you get your assignments. You upload and download your assignments from. So I just wanted to be clear on that, not to belabor the point.
Well, I don't, I don't mean to belabor the point, like you just said, but I'm not, I feel like the answers we just got were completely contradictory.
Yeah, they were.
I heard, I heard that if, if no teacher would, will have to teach both in-person and virtually, and that a student would be moved to the Ignite program if a student had to leave the physical classroom. But then I heard that a teacher would use Schoology to teach an individual student that has to quarantine or isolate out of the physical classroom. So I put this back to you. Those sound contradictory to me, but it might be my ignorance. So I welcome you to clarify that.
Thank you, Director Woods. No, if a student is in a classroom onsite and has to be quarantined, then we would use the platform, Schoology, that has been outlined, that we got permission to use, what we used last year with the Schoology, as they do their work online, until they come off of quarantine. So that is what we can use, so that their student will not be counted absent.
But isn't that going to require some level of virtual instruction from the teacher to that student or those two or three students?
Or those two or three students, yes. And that's going to be on a case-by-case basis, yes, through Schoology.
Got it.
I want to make sure that, is that-
I understand that, and I think that's clear now. I'm not sure if that's the desire of the board necessarily, but I think it's clear what's written.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. So you guys, this is an action item, just to bring it back to all of our memories. This is an action item for Ready to Learn. And if discussion have, I guess we need to make a motion to vote on this, because I don't think a motion was made. That was about an hour ago. So do you, let's enter, I don't think we had a motion. We had Dr. McGee do the presentation. We started having questions. So now we're at the point of entertaining a motion. Attorney Walker, is that the way you captured that, too?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. So if we're ready to vote on this Ready for Learn Plan, I will entertain a motion. Or do you want corrections? I mean, it's up to you guys. Okay. So what, yes, Director Adams?
Thank you, Ms. Hatter. I would be glad to move that we approved the Ready to Learn Plan and that we asked the administration to bring back an incentivization plan for student, to encourage student vaccinations for those who are eligible.
All right. Do we have a motion on the table?
I'll second Mr. Adams' motion.
Okay. Any discussion? Any more discussion? Okay. You, yes, sir. Director Wood?
I think I'll pass. But thank you.
Okay. We're ready. Prepare yourselves to vote. Director Callaway?
Well, I can't pick this, because there are two unanswered questions here. And I don't have the answers. And I want to vote on this, but there's not enough clarity here. And that, that's the reason why I cannot vote for this. I know it's, it's, part of it's good if we went by one part at a time, perhaps. But I think that this, there's too many, there's too many holes there. And you're going to end up with a lot of unhappy parents, because if I still had kids, I would be wonderful.
Okay. Do we have any other comments from board members? Okay. Prepare yourselves to vote. Okay. All in favor of the motion that was made by Director Adams, seconded by Director Wood? I'm sorry, Director, Vice President Wilson. I'm sorry, girl. All in favor, signal by saying aye to vote and pass the Ready for Learning Plan for 21-22 school year?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. All in favor. So we have that vote. Any opposed to the passing of the Ready for Learn Plan for 21-22 school year? Okay. So what that, so we have, actually, what we have, we have a seven to two vote, and the two is Callaway and Hatter. And for Hatter, it's just that, I just think that we needed more, to have clarity on- on some of these things before we completely voted on it. But the mask mandate, obviously, that was the main thing. So the Ready for Learn Plan have passed, and we are able to move on to the next.
President Hatter, just like Mr. Wood did, I'm going to go ahead and make the motion that I'd like to make as far as amending what we just passed. I understand that there's a difference of opinion, this may not carry, but I do want to go ahead and make it.
Yeah.
So I move that we amend the Ready for Learning Plan that we just passed to require vaccinated people, as well as unvaccinated people, to quarantine, both students and adults. So that's the motion I'm making.
We got it seconded by Director Mourning. So we have opened it up for discussion. Director Adams.
Just a question of clarity to begin with. Ms. Nolan, when you say vaccinated people, are you intending to include asymptomatic vaccinated people on that?
Yes, so the current guidelines say that an asymptomatic vaccinated person does not have to quarantine. So a symptomatic vaccinated person would already have to quarantine. This is just, I am trying to acknowledge or address the fact that it appears that Delta is somewhat different in terms of being able to, vaccinated people to transmit the virus. And I want to, every time I say that, I want to be clear, vaccines are safe, they are effective, they will save your life. But we may still need to address the fact that a vaccinated person could potentially still infect others. And so that is the basis of my motion.
If I, I do want to, typically, we don't interject, we're in discussion, but we do have a medical personnel, so I do want to hear from our nurse real quick. And if you could give your opinion based off of your medical experience and not based off of anything else, that would be great.
So just to clarify, Madam President, are you wanting just my personal opinion, or are you wanting what we base our decisions off of?
I want what you base, what medical professionals base their decisions off of. Director Nolan brought up the fact, which is a true fact, that people that are vaccinated do still, are, and are able to contract COVID, and they're able to pass it along, even if they're asymptomatic and they have been vaccinated. So what's on the table for the board to consider is, do vaccinated people need to quarantine even if they've been exposed to COVID?
So what we are basing our decision off of is our Arkansas Department of Health guidelines and our CDC guidelines. And the current discussion on that, and even in our POC meeting yesterday with the whole state, with all of our POC leaders, is that if you are fully vaccinated and you do not have symptoms, you do not have to quarantine. I would like to echo on what Director Adams stated earlier, and that is a very good discussion that he brought up, is that we are having, if we, as a POC team, have to quarantine all of those individuals that are fully vaccinated, we could run into a real issue of not having staff, the AMI days, and all of that. So we have to take in consideration with that. I think with the guidelines that we have set forth, that if you do start to become symptomatic, you immediately have to go home and you have to isolate, I think that does help. I know that there are asymptomatic individuals that can be positive. We know that, that is true. I think, I just don't, I don't want to say specifics, but I think we just need to make sure that we are protecting our schools, we're keeping our students and staff safe, that is true, and we want to do that. But I think the guidelines that are set forth that we do have, I think that that will work for us at this point in time.
And you're basing that off of your...
Of the Arkansas Department of Health, the POC state meeting that we had yesterday, and the CDC.
Okay.
And doctors that I've spoken to at Arkansas Children's and UAMS.
Got you.
I was just going to say, that's also why we don't have different roles on masking vaccinated versus unvaccinated, because the CDC at one point allowed vaccinated people to be unmasked, and I think that's why it's important, ours is universal.
And we're following, we're trying to do the multi-layer mitigation strategies as well, and that helps as well. So it's not, I think, a cut and dry...
Oh, go ahead.
I'm just saying, with the multi-layer mitigation strategies that we're trying to implement, that will assist as well.
Got you.
Well, I just wanted to say, I appreciate that. I'm not critical of the recommendations that you all have brought, because I understand that you all are following the guidelines as they are now. I was suggesting this because I think it provides the maximum amount of potential protection, because it does, you know, cover those other potential exposures that, you know, I understand they're rare, I understand that this is not something that is currently recommended. I'm trying to potentially, you know, reduce that even further so we can make it as safe as possible, but I totally understand that.
Yeah, and I'd also like to also state, if we could just emphasize the importance of social distancing if we can, if we can emphasize limiting that time that you are spending with people, the less than 15 minutes, because that is what places you on quarantine, is that if you are closer than six feet for greater than 15 minutes, that is going to help as well.
Thank you so much, Director Wood, I mean, Director Adams.
Thank you, Ms. Hatter. I'll try to be brief, just to summarize my concerns, because I mentioned them before. Really, my concerns about the motion would be a few. One would be, I think that there's always a risk, a balance of risk and benefit that we have to try to live with, and so, you know, to eliminate all risk, you know, we wouldn't be able to do school at all, so we're trying to find, you know, a happy balance. And I appreciate that that's not always clear. My concern is that to quarantine asymptomatic people, one, goes against our best expert medical health recommendations, and if we start going to field and making our own judgments, then I feel like we're a little bit unmoored about how to make decisions. Because we're not going to the people who understand this the best. Number two, I think in some ways it could disincentivize people to get vaccinated, especially young people, if we're saying, please get vaccinated so you can stay in school and see your friends and be on the team, and we say, but if you do get vaccinated, it makes no difference, you still have to quarantine. I think in some ways we may have a backwards effect, where we're going to discourage people from being vaccinated, and that can take away from the potential for our schools to be safer. And then the other piece is, the piece I think is that if vaccinated asymptomatic people have to quarantine, then we're going to lose a lot more teachers, nurses, administrators, who are capable of continuing quality school and instruction, and have to have less quality school and instruction happening at the same time. And I think that educationally, it would be a real disadvantage. I appreciate the concern and the motivation there. I just think that it's not the right balance of risk and benefit.
All right.
I'll just say that I too am going to vote against the motion for the same reasons that Mr. Adams just said, but I do want to just express my respect to Director Nolan and Ms. Mourning for the motion, and I respect the intent of it, but...
And all of those points are valid. I mean, I totally understand what you're saying, and I think the incentive part is a really big concern, because we do need to get our students who are eligible to be vaccinated. We need a higher percentage of those to be vaccinated. You know, I'm going to leave my motion on the table. I can tell kind of where the, I can read the room on where we are on this right now. I would suggest that if and when we have any change in guidance, I would really love to be brought to us very quickly so that we can move on that.
All right, are you guys ready to cast a vote for the motion that had been brought? Okay, so, all in favor of the motion, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, all that oppose the, are not in favor of the motion, please state by saying nay.
Nay.
Okay, thank you guys in the office for that motion, but the motion didn't carry. Okay, so with that, we are moving on to personnel. And with this, you guys, we are not going to go into, I'm sorry, please?
You've got to make a motion.
What is your motion?
Well, that we're going to go in executive session to talk about this personnel.
Well, we may not, okay, we may not need to. Okay, let me ask the question to the board. You guys have had an opportunity to review the personnel recommendations. One of them is creating a new FTE, which is a new position for the Ignite Digital Virtual Academy. And so that is creating a principal, and then the other ones are vice principal, I believe. So my question to you guys is, do you guys have any personnel questions pertaining to those three individuals? I'm trying to see in order for an executive session is needed.
I have a question, not to those individuals, but to more of the context that I would like to talk about.
Okay, so if it's just to the context of it, and Attorney Walker, if you will, please approach, if it's just to the context and not dealing...
It would deal with people.
Is it dealing with people and not the overall...
That's correct.
Virtual, okay.
That's correct.
All right, so we will, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session.
All right, I move that we go into an executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel changes that include principals and creating new assistant principal positions.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, yes, we will give you all a couple seconds to clear the room.
Ms. Callaway, can you, can you hear me? I can hear you. It's the echo, but I can hear you.
Yeah, go ahead now.
But I had a question before we got to that. But maybe we can discuss this in closed session.
Excuse me, board members, Ms. Callaway will have to call in in order for us to mute all of you from the Zoom, please.
All right then, what's, look, what's the number?
Can you call Dr. McGee, and he can put you on speakerphone?
Oh, yeah, I got, I got.
And then mute your mic if you don't mind. Thank you.
Welcome back, Little Rock and beyond. Now, thank you. We are coming out of our executive session and I will entertain a motion to bring us out. Okay, we have a motion on the table. Do we have a second?
I second that.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor, the vote. Prepare yourselves, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Nay. Okay, so we are now out of executive session. In this session, we didn't take any action. We talked about the personnel recommendations. So, at this time, I will entertain any motions on the personnel recommendations for the principals and assistant principal.
President Heather, I move that the LRSD school board approve the personnel changes noted in the board packet and presented by the administration.
Okay, we have a motion on the table. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Do we have any discussion?
Should we state, I mean, just for the record, what, like, who it is we're actually voting on for the individual spots?
Well, well-
I mean, it says in the packet, but, I mean, we've never-
Yeah. Well, it's a lot. It's several pages.
Okay, oh, we're doing the whole list, that's right, okay.
I nominate Ms. Nolan to read all of those.
Read it like graduation. All right. We have such a great board, I tell you. We really do. Love it. Okay, so, there go our discussion and question answered. Okay. Ready the vote? Okay, all in favor of accepting the recommendation for personnel recommendations? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Nay. Okay, so, that passes. Next on our agenda is another action. It is Dr. Freddie Fields will come and speak to us. It's about student legal transfers and I'm just gonna talk until he appears.
Madam President.
Is he here?
He's not here today.
Okay.
He couldn't make it, so we're just asking for a vote, a favor of a vote, for the legal transfers that was listed.
And are these, I believe these are the same, you know, we've done this a few times and it's, if there's a deadline and if it's after the deadline, we have to vote on it?
Yes, correct. And this gives them the, I'm sorry, there was a delay in my brain, I'm sorry. Will you finish? Okay, and this just gives them, for those who wonder about legal transfers, it gives them the rights to participate fully, either in our district or else going into the district they are going into. So, I am ready to entertain a motion on these if there's no further information needed.
I move that the Little Rock School Board approve the student transfer petition as presented by the administration.
I will second that motion.
We have a second. Any discussion? All ready to vote? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so that passes. The transfers pass. So, I will entertain a motion for adjourning the special meeting.
I move that we adjourn the special meeting.
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? Ready the vote? Oh, wait, you have a, who has a discussion? No one? Okay, ready the vote? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? No? Okay, thank you for that. And transition. Now, we will get into our agenda, pre-agenda meeting. The agenda for the 26 is before you. So, I'm going to do like I normally do, I go down and then with a series of them in there and-
Before we get to our agenda for the next meeting, I think there's a presentation.
There's a presentation, district plan and support presentation.
Oh, okay, one second. Okay, so, okay, so I'm not gonna do, just for clarity, because we're jumping now. There is a presentation that, a presentation that will happen. I'm not gonna do the welcomes and the targets for the meeting, we did that. And then, we will just immediately jump down into the reports and discussions and the district plan of support for school improvement. And Dr. McGee and Ms. Loring will present to us. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President, let me share my screen.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. You guys are aware that we have to do a district plan of support- a district plan of support. And we wanna just briefly come and present the key components of our plan of support, the goals, and some of the actions. I will tell you, this is a collaborative approach between the central office administration and DESI, because we're still in Level 4. We have to collaborate within with our plan of support. So, with that, we see here, these are our goals for this year. To keep in mind that we did add a fifth goal. Excuse me, I'm gonna go back. We had four, five goals, but goal number four addresses our math adoption, our math programs, and our strategies. And then goal five, we are, have a goal here that's gonna assure that we continue to maintain fiscal governance. And so, that is the five goals. Our needs assessment, this is again based off our ACT 2021 ACT data. You would get a full report on August 26th on that breakdown of that data. That'll be forthcoming. You see the results here in red. Just, I wanna just highlight the red areas for you. Goal number one, some of the key actions that we are going to take. That's social emotional learning, the restored justice, the high reliability schools, the professional learning communities. You see some of the timelines and some of the evidence. Every goal that we have, we wanna make sure that we continue to, there's measurable items that we can come back and bring before you and to our, and to the state board. Goal number two, and let me go back to goal number one. That is more, again, that safe and collaborative culture on the school level. Goal number two, keep in mind that equitable, the high quality and the evidence base. And you see some of our actions here. The work that we're doing, we've already begun in terms of the district, reviewing our district's essential standards. And also, with the CFA, Common Formative Assessment Training and Support. Again, you see some of our evidence of monitoring. And let me also say, the district plan of support is a living document. This is something that we may have to adjust and change based off the data. So, DESI stands with us to make sure that we continue to monitor on this. Goal number five, you see our literacy program, and you see some key actions. And the monitoring timelines and some key evidence that's gonna be very vital to attaining this goal here. And goal number four, this is, again, our math adoption. Remember that we adopted a new math program textbook. The program here is gonna continue to, these actions here. We wanna make sure that we establish those structures so that teachers can be successful in teaching using this math adoption, but also the fidelity. And again, that's support. So, that is the math, the adopted math materials. And you see the timeline there, some of the monitoring timelines and the support. In all of these, we would tackle even more coming into 26th and tying all that into our ACT Aspire data. And goal number five, which is also a new goal, such as, the same as goal number four, which is to, again, maintain that fiscal governance. Here, some of the key actions here, right sizing. You may have heard that term that we use several times, right sizing the schools, the staffing. Again, developing, implementing the plan for the district budget spending. We're talking more of the operational side. So, not the grant funding. Mr. Bailey, am I correct on that?
No, he just-
But that is what we're talking about. He stepped out. School improvement plans. Again, the schools have their improvement plans. Those are living documents as well. So, they're gonna continue to review the data. You see here, they are, the executive directors are already having those meetings with the schools and continue to put those things in place. Lastly here, we are, again, in collaboration with DESI yesterday with Ms. Stacy Smith, we do have to do four quarterly reports. So, our goal as an executive team, executive cabinet team, we're gonna come back and do the report to the board, this board. And you see those dates there. And then, we will have to go before the state board of the quarterly reports. And with that, we will take any questions. And I do have all three of the executive directors, elementary, secondary, and the curriculum instruction team that's here to help answer any questions. With that, I'm gonna take my seat back.
Yeah, come on up here. I will, we'll open it up for discussion for the board, our questions. Director Nolan.
I'll be very good. So, I understand we are getting a more in-depth report, so I'm not gonna go dive into those parts. But you mentioned that y'all are coordinating with the state on this. Is the feedback that this is a good plan? This is successful? You know, what is the feedback from the state on-
So, thank you. Thank you for that. Actually, you're right. Ms. Stacy Smith said that we, we thought, she thought we had a very thorough plan that can help move student achievement. So, it was very positive. In fact, the feedback that we got was some minor tweaks, some language adding percentages, things of that nature, just kinda be a little bit more specific. I think one of the actions asked us to, we wanted to add, include, provide all schools the training with the professional learning communities and high reliability schools. I think that was the language. So, it was very positive. We did not have a bad meeting. In fact, it was, it was, she spoke very highly of the team. And I wanna publicly thank the team for creating this plan. She felt like it was on the right track if that we would continue the work that was done from last year.
Wilson?
So, a couple of questions. One, the school improvement plans are done by the school principals in coordination with administration, right?
I'm gonna let the executive directors for elementary and secondary come up with.
I wanna make sure I know who's making these.
Okay. And two, you guys, I want you to know, don't let this one off easily.
First of all, I wanna be clear. Do I keep it on or take it off?
On. You can take it off. You can do whatever you feel.
Can y'all hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay. First of all, I'm gonna use some PLC language with you, but they're Guiding Coalition, which is really a leadership team that's made up, obviously, of the principal and other administrators. But teachers are all engaged inside of the schools, school improvement plan. They refer to data that we always, that you hear a lot about, the ACT Aspire, the MAP data, and that testing data that we use, plus the Common Formative Assessments, which we need to spend time with you at some point to go back through what that actually is. But it's common exams amongst a group of teachers that will give the same exam after teaching a lesson or lessons, and then they take the data from it as well. But all that surrounds our school improvement plan. So, they just got their results, just like y'all will see the results from ACT Aspire coming up and get more detail later in August. Our schools are doing the same thing and at the same time trying to start school. So, they have dug into the data, but they haven't had the opportunity with their entire Guiding Coalition to be able to look at it real closely yet. But that comes back to where Mr. Smith and I get involved, because in October, they will have taken that first set of MAP data, as well as our ACT Aspire stuff, to find out where the kids are they currently have right now, and start working on their school improvement plan. And then, they update it. And you guys will get to seeing, they're always posted on our website, but we make them update it and bring it forward. It's posted on the website. And it is, really is, a living, breathing document. That's what it amounts to. So, it's not done in isolation. And just to remind the board, I know we introduced this, really, I guess, when the cab was here, and y'all may remember. But where this all started came from what the schools told us they needed for support. And so, the good news is the states accepted exactly what our schools were saying they needed support in. And that's where this has grown to where it is now.
Mr. Rutherford. I don't know if this, this all ties in or not, and you will tell me. So, looking at the school improvement plans is based off of testing. Is that a correct assumption? That is, they, they will take tests or else they will dive into the data? Where does the D efficiency, like, grades fall with the Ds and the Fs? Like, is that part of that? Is the attempted graduation credits versus what was earned or not earned? All of that, does that play a role in it?
Yes, ma'am. Every bit of it. Everything for our ESSR score, which we've not had, because, you know, as you know, they weigh them. But all those criteria that you mentioned, specifically on the secondary level for high schools. Graduation rates looked at. All your credits staying on track, on time for graduation is also another place. All your community services looked at inside of that as well, which is an opportunity for kids to gain, and it helps the schools to help on their ESSR score as well. So, yes, ma'am. Every bit of criteria that makes up what we call ESSR score, we look at in the schools and the schools look at. And then, they do the same thing. I could go all the way back down to elementary, back down through middle school, same criteria. They look at all the places where they gain points and those things, and that's all part of their school improvement plan.
Okay. And the last thing I have on that is, with the early, I guess, last meeting or meeting before that, I talked about the, the reporting of deficit of, of those grades right to the board to where, at the end of every report card cycle, the board gets, 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 gets a report that have all the deficit grades versus, and then, as well as the credits not earned to where we are able to, one, be aware, and then, broken out by school. So, is, is, that is something, is that something you all would be able to provide right to the board after every report card?
I think we could after every quarter, which I think is what you're asking for. And I think we can get a report run. We can't run the report, but I think somebody in the district can run the report to get you that data to bring it back to you. I think you're really gonna be amazed for the report I'm gonna give you on summer learning and those type things, the numbers and the number of credits recovered and the number of kids that we influence, which is exactly where you're going. It's gonna, you're gonna be shocked. I mean, and in a good way shocked. So, I don't wanna steal all my thunder before I get back up.
All right. Thank you. Anything else, anybody?
When we get the more detailed report, are we gonna get the numbers broken down by schools?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I can say, are you gonna be able to do by school as well, in your summer learning?
It should be an inquiry. Oh, sorry.
Well, on my level, let me say that, on the middle school and high school level, yes, ma'am, you'll get exactly that.
Oh, you guys, I'm sorry. What I asked Dr. McGee is if they could run, if they could run a query is what I was asking, and he said, I believe so. So, just so you guys know what we said.
Ms. Hatter?
Yes, please, Director.
Thank you. So, I, I would like to see in, in the more detailed presentation that we get, the differences between this year's plan and last year's plan and the year before that's plan. And to show us the, the changes that are identified as needs in, at every grade level. And, and the reason is because I appreciate the effort that's put into these plans and the thinking and the, the strategy and the intentionality. I get all that. But the end of every year, I, I am desperate to see achievement scores change, not just our beginning of the year plans change. And, and so, I really wanna see that some, some real thought is put into, what have we tried before? And what didn't work? And what are we doing tangibly different to try to move in the direction of higher achievement for our students?
Director Woods, can I just ask a question for clarification? Are you specifically talking about the districts of plan of support or the school improvement plans?
Probably the school improvement plans, though I know that that's roughly 40 of them, and that can be overwhelming to the board to, to dissect that. So, I would ask you to be somewhat cognizant that we are laypeople, we are not professional educators, and this isn't our full-time job. So, just like some, some level of digestibility in what, what each school is, has identified different. And, and again, specifically, what is different than last year's plan? Because did last year's plan work? And if it didn't work, what are we doing different this year? Or what do we need to add more support to? What do we need to lean into harder than, than we identified? I don't, I'm not critiquing any specific item. I'm just asking to see that y'all are critiquing every single thing.
And another way to do that is, because one of our roles as board directors is to look at the data of our schools. So, if you were to just give each member their schools in their zones, and so, we can look at that, and then, we could come together and do a study session together and go over that data, then that will work, because then, that will be easier to, right, to digest. And then, two, we will see the lay of the land right of our, our district, how our schools are represented. Mr. Smith?
Yes, I just have a question for clarification. Throughout the year, we, we have, bring the schools together, and they share out their plans, what's working, what's not working, make revisions throughout the years. Mr. Rutherford indicated the plans are living documents. So, just for clarification, what we attempt to do as we make revisions, the things that are not working, they're removed from the plan. So, are you asking, maybe we color coded, where you see where there may have been an adjustment? But typically, when, if it's something in action in the plan that's not working, it's, it's taken out and replaced with the, the new action. And then, as it relates to the data, how it's capitalized, typically in the goal, you'll see where we currently are and where we would like to be by the end of the year.
Director Nolan?
Well, maybe I can, I will tell you, for me, looking at 40 plans and comparing 40 last year and 40 this year would be too much. But if there were some sort of very brief synopsis where you can talk about, like, a brief synopsis where you could talk about, here are the things that didn't work last year that we took out of the plan for this year. Here are the things that worked so well, we're doubling down on them because they really showed results. You know, just to give us an idea of how y'all are responding to the data and letting us see, you know, the changes that are being made. So, just something like that.
Okay.
And, and two, I still, well, for, for, for me, if you could also just give, give me my, my schools that I have in my zone, which is Brady Bell, Brady Bell Williams, and Parkview and Southwest, because a lot of our children go to Southwest, and J Fair Prep. Then, I would like to look at that data just because those are my, my schools, my zone schools, to where I am able to know what's happening in, in, in that zone and for, and for the children coming out of that zone going into these schools, so.
Okay. But I would like to add for our listening public, our school improvement plans, as well as our district plan of support, is posted to our district website. So, they have access to it as well.
Anything else? All right. Question, any other questions? My, okay. I do have one on math. With math intensity, so, I understand that there, there is math intensity at the 6th through 8th grade level, which is junior high, middle school area. What's happening for K through 5? And then, when, when will that happen?
When you say math intensity, you mean the intervention class?
The interventions and all that.
So, yes, there are intervention classes in 6th through 12th grade. In elementary school, those intervention periods are built into the classroom during the school day. That's also part of our learning loss plan, where we're incorporating after-school tutoring, before-school tutoring, and then, those summer learning opportunities. So, that's the way that it's built in for elementary schools. It's not a separate class. It's built in, there's an intervention periods and support within the school day.
Okay. That's, that is my, my only question. I have a few other ballots and your email on them. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Well, with that, that closes out our reports and discussions, and we will move forward to our attended, thank you, guys. I, we appreciate you. We'll move forward to our tentative agenda. Okay. Okay, so right where it says three, that is really my one. So, so we will go um alphabetically from A to D. Are, are you guys okay with what you see, A to D?
Um, those are all good.
Mm-hmm.
Well, yeah, it doesn't like the normal, real basic.
Okay.
That we want to.
Yes, uh, E to H?
Ma'am, I have just one point of clarification with the district plan of support. It has to be voted on, it has to be uploaded on the website by September one, so the board will have to approve the district plan of support.
Okay, that, okay.
At the next meeting.
Yeah, yeah, it says action, okay.
And just, so we, we will have a chance before the next meeting in that week or so before to have those conversations if there are things that we, so that we can get to that point.
And, and to the hope is that we will, go ahead, Director Wood?
No, 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 I was about to change the subject, so go ahead.
Okay, uh, the hope is that we will have uh the entire packet in time to where we can thoroughly go through it um so we don't have, have any uh, uh, delays. That's all I was gonna add to Director Nolan's part. Uh, Director Wood?
My thoughts on G and H, as, as I read these, I feel like they're kinda backwards. Um, if, if we could talk about how, you know, what, what the testing results of the school year looked like and then how the summer school might have addressed some of that, if we could just switch those around. Uh, if I'm micromanaging, I accept that criticism, I just uh.
No, that's process, right?
Yeah.
Very good. Uh, G and H, got it. I through L.
I have some things I'd like to bring up that I think should probably go in before L.
Go ahead, I'm, we're, we're listening.
Um, and I, I suppose this might fit into school improvement plans, I'm not exactly sure, but specific ways that we're gonna in, invest in addressing, you know, learning loss from this past year. Um, it, I, I, I don't, I don't anticipate us having a rosy conversation when we're talking about the twenty twenty-one ACT Aspire results. And so I'm gonna have some heaviness about what, what are we doing differently? But I accept that if that's part of the school improvement plan, then, you know, that, that may be part of that.
Yeah, that will be a part of the school improvement plans um that you're speaking of. Um, each school would, would address that differently.
Okay.
So is that a comprehensive plan, like a thorough and com, uh, very thorough and com, um, and um comprehensive to where we're able to look at it and say, okay, at this point, this is happening, then this, I mean, is, how, will it be thorough?
That's something that we can make it as thorough as possible and clear and concise for the board and the public. Um, what's, what's occurring, timelines and evidence, if that's what the board wish.
Yes, please, is that what the board wish, uh, comprehensive, clear and concise?
That's really hard to achieve, comprehensive and concise.
Clear, the clear part, right, where we know what it is.
I mean, personally, I would almost like to see some analysis by, by teachers down to the student level of that we've identified that this student is in this place and, you know, a third gr, at, at the end of a third grade year should have ideally been at this place. What kinda, where were they when they showed up at the beginning of third grade? What kinda growth did they experience or regression? And what are we doing to address that? To either give them more growth, to get them to a full year's growth? Or, you know, in the, in the worst scenarios to, to make up the losses that they experienced. And I, I don't expect to come in here and y'all show me, you know, eight thousand plans to address eight thousand students. But, but to see that there is analysis going on down to the individual level is, is important to me. So, I, I would love to hear that in how, how you address the learning losses from last year.
Okay.
I also wonder.
And that may even come in a, like a resolution, you know, something to where we're directing the district because that's a lot of directives, right? So maybe um we may need to get with um Attorney Walker to put that into a motion so it's a part of the board to where it's a directive to the uh district. Cause that was, that was kinda um, that was a lot, so, but yeah. Okay, what was your next thought?
Yeah, I also have thoughts about hosting a, a literacy summit um that would essentially be a work session, I suppose, but one where we're talking a lot less, but, but maybe some, I have no idea. But, but doesn't need to be a Thursday night uh board meeting. Prob, a, a couple of years ago, we did it on a Saturday morning and this room was full of uh probably fifty people. Now, that might be too much, maybe we need to do it in an auditorium at one, on one of our high school campuses so that we can socially distance and uh but still have meaningful uh players in the room to, cause again, I anticipate that the conversation about the, the spring assessment isn't gonna be great and I, I, I really want to, to hear from a lot of different people on how, how we're addressing that. Uh, I know, I know I'm asking for a lot, uh, just too many lives at stake here in that opinion.
Jeff, uh, can you put that in, in the email to make sure that, that is captured and then just send it all out?
Sure.
Thank you. And, and, and um, okay, so just to stay on um our agenda, are there any other thoughts and concerns uh with that? Uh, I was gonna say numbering, but lettering. Director Wood, I mean, you guys sit close together.
And we look just alike.
Not really, but Adam.
All we white guys look alike.
No, you guys, that was a joke for anybody too sensitive, gosh.
That's no problem. Uh, no, the, the question I had was, was not here, but I wondered if, if there could be comment made about are the agendas gonna happen for next week at some point before we end the evening? Didn't know what to expect.
Um, repeat that, please?
That, that, before we ended our agenda discussion in, in general, to talk about what agenda we're gonna have for next week, the nineteenth, then I think we're, we're supposed to meet, the, the plan or the tentative plan was to meet there to talk about a millage extension. So I'd like to hear more what the expectations are for that.
You know, the superintendent and I haven't even uh met to talk about that. Um, so hopefully um he's back online within a couple of days to where we can have, have that conversation or else um I'll, I'll uh just make a, a phone call to him to see um exactly what does that uh, uh look like. But it is gonna be about, you know, a lot about what we've already talked about. Sorry, it keep going in my mouth, my mask. But um, and, and then two, about the town halls, so follow up on that. And then moving forward uh right to, because we have to take a vote to put it on the ballot, you guys. And then, um, and then uh the aggressiveness about getting out there and then uh right to support uh, of, of the millage. And so I, that is what the um overall meeting will be about with all of the input um going on um from there. So I said I haven't talked to him, but throughout all this time, we've talked about it and, and that's one of the things. And then two, we also talked about um, um fundraising or, or rate, going, going out and getting the money to um put it on the um ballot because that does come at a cost and the district cannot uh pay for it. And so uh that, that is really right where we left um talking um about that. And so uh once he come back online, then we'll, we'll pick that up. And then um most likely, uh, Dr. McGee will, um, then if he's not, if Mr. Poor is not back online, uh, Dr. McGee will uh send some, uh, something out to all of us. Okay, um, with that, you guys, is there any?
I do have one on, um, so this is for the agenda for the twenty-sixth.
Correct.
And I am gonna go to I, the finance updates?
Yes.
And just make a request so um for Mr. Bailey, I guess, cause I'm assuming you'll be the one presenting us those updates. Um, I would love to get an updated breakdown, you know, again on our ESSR funds specifically, ESSR one, ESSR two, how we have spent those, what's left, you know, in each category. Um, and I had a constituent reach out, this has been a little while ago, but say, we have provided really detailed breakdowns for, I believe it was ESSR one funds, but that our breakdown following that is a little more general. And so to, to provide a little bit more specificity in terms of how we've spent that money so far and how much of it is left and, you know, we need to start talking about making decisions about how to utilize that. So, uh, that's just requests for the twenty-sixth. We don't have to talk about it tonight.
Can I bring up one more thing?
Yes.
Okay, it's just, it, big, big things for the school district in the next couple of months. Uh, I would just like to hear, and, and this isn't about the agenda for the twenty-sixth, but it is, when, when are we going to start the conversations about school utilization and preparing to, to pay for the teacher raises that, that we have committed to? And, you know, we're gonna make a plan this fall. My, my urgency is that next week, hopefully, we make a recommendation to the city and put it on a ballot to have a millage extension, but to show them the, you know, the fiscal responsibility that we're taking as soon as possible so that that can be part of the discussion going into November, uh, the early November election, that this school board is doing all the right things and investing in all the right places. The earlier we can do that, I think the, the more that, more mileage that part of the conversation will get to get the public to trust us with that, those funds. So, what, what is the plan? Would, would that start in August or will that start September?
Uh, Chief Deputy, deals with money.
I'll try to talk on this, can y'all hear me, babe?
Yes.
So, dealing with that, I think, well, superintendent's gonna bring it up, but I know in conversation with the PPC along with the uh HR about those proposals, we've shown you what the teacher's draft looks like, that's being tweaked a little bit, I met with them this afternoon. Uh, overall, it's the same, not sure what the final approval is gonna look like, but it's gonna be similar. I would say it probably September or maybe October, I think Mr. Poor mentioned October, bringing that forward, so.
And are you specifically talking about, you know, which campuses are underutilized and?
Well, I'm just talking about the, the personnel part now. So I guess that we probably would need to have some type of, I think, kinda work session to kinda look at some of those things, especially when enrollment data comes in. I wouldn't do it probably before October first till you get your official, you know, enrollment data for cycle two and kinda see where that's gonna play at. This is gonna be an unusual year again because of the pandemic. So, uh, you know, people are choosing different options for, than in, in school or even our virtual offerings so at times. So we'll kinda have to see that, but we can definitely start having those discussions cause at least we need to discuss the remaining items in the blueprint, if there is any.
We do, definitely. Um, okay, I wanna stay in the same vein, but um I'll write down my question so I don't forget. Uh, did you have something to say, are you leaning in? Are you good?
I'm good, I'm good.
Director.
Well, this is in the same vein of things that we have kind of put on the back burner and we may want to talk about either adding to this or a future agenda. We talked about getting um RFPs or RFQs for a um PR campaign to try to help with enrollment and we're talking about enrollment numbers. So I just wanna, you know, make sure that we stay on top of that and, and if we need to vote to move forward, um, you know, additionally, cause I know we started the process, but I just wanna make sure that we take whatever vote is needed to move forward on that.
I know superintendent is, uh, work, he was working on that along with communications and uh Deputy Chief. I act like I don't know your name anymore, but it's, it's easier to say that. Um, and so hopefully then we will actually um get an update on where we are with, with that RFP um right, right for that uh robust marketing and branding.
As far as procurement, we're on, on standby, so we're just waiting for the go-ahead. So probably, I'm not sure if some more communication with Ms. Smith along with the superintendent probably needs to be had, so.
Yeah, okay.
I'm sorry to keep talking, um, but I feel like this is the only time to discuss ideas, you know?
Yes.
Um, brainstorm. Um, I, I'll mention again that, you know, school starts on Monday and we have yet to set goals for the district. And I have an urgency about, you know, creating some measurable goals that the administration can see what our, you know, collective body expects from the performance of the district, whether that be a, a special session or a, uh, yeah, whatever. No, that's not the right word.
We meet all the time.
I don't even know. A special meeting, I don't know.
Special.
Work session, yeah, that's right. It won't even get out of committee, we do it that way. Um, but uh, anyway, bringing in uh, uh, the, the guy who came, you know, a couple of months ago that was very effective, I felt, and, and for, for nine new people that have never, well, I, with all due respect to the two that have set goals before, and maybe y'all could lead the, uh, maybe y'all could lead it then.
I like that you're good.
But I just.
I was gonna say, actually completely agree with that and that was gonna be my recommendation is that we bring him back to help us like have a two-day thing and set some very tangible, measurable, realistic, achievable goals.
I agree.
So I agree, a hundred percent.
Okay, so can we look for, um.
Like next month.
Like, okay, next month.
Early September is what I would say.
Can we look at third and, the third and fourth uh week in September? Uh, because the first week is, is gonna be very trying uh because we have Labor Day and then um the second week, normally school things are happening, particularly at the elementary level. And then, um, and then at high school, stuff is going on. So the third or fourth week, if you could reach out to um him to see if he has um availability, do you think you could do that tomorrow?
Yes, I can do that tomorrow.
Okay, and so um our deputy superintendent will reach out to um Mr. Ali on those dates and then come back to us with those dates. My only request on that would be for it to be the first part of the week um because um uh Director Wilson have clinical, clinics um and then we wanna make sure she's able to get in on this as well.
I love Mr. Ali, I thought he was fantastic, but we also need to ask how much it costs to bring him back. Um, so, you know, maybe just make that part of the conversation with Mr. Poor and everything else.
Yeah, and, and, and two, just for the, and just for the record, uh, he uh did a significant slash in one of his uh costs. So, so it was actually cheaper than, than our initial um consultants. Okay, so.
And maybe I need to call his mom, cause she's a social worker and she might.
There you go, that part. So if, if, if you could do that and so we can get going and not um delay any further. You guys, um, I, I'm, I'm going to uh say this again, cause I don't remember, it's not about you, it's more about me cause I've lost where I'm at. Um, so from I to through L, are we okay on, on that agenda? Are, are y'all, I feel like I'm yelling, but, okay, um, are we okay? Okay, um, my question that I said I, I was gonna write down, I put meeting, that's what I was going to ask is for you guys to look at your calendars, but um we've, we've done that, thank you guys. And with that, we have gone through our tentative agenda and if there's um nothing else for the good of the board or um any one of us, I will entertain a motion.
I think our subcommittee that was talking about changing our policy about how we set the agenda, we still have to meet, we haven't met yet, so that would be separate from this. But if we're making a list of things to circle back on and follow up on, we need to make sure we do that as well.
Uh, Board Clerk, uh, can you please look at some dates? Um, uh, the next two weeks are gonna be kinda good, but maybe the second week in September and shoot a message to who all was, everybody that, 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 that was gonna meet for the agenda meeting?
I think me, Ally and I think Evelyn.
And, and uh Director Callaway, so just the four of us.
Not include me.
Oh, and you wanna get in?
No.
Okay, but then we do have the emails, uh, you and uh Director Adams sent to uh Mr. Poor. So with that.
Was Mr. Adams' questions about next week fully addressed?
Yes, uh, did you capture that, no, for the nineteenth? Uh, you would touch bases with um Mr. Poor and then, yes, it was. Come on, Chief Deputy.
So I'll be uploading agenda item most likely on tomorrow. So Mr. Trump has actually provided us the same information we pretty much had, I believe it was April or May that we went over. So it has different applications and uh, but it includes the three hundred million of proceeds instead of the, the two hundred and twenty-two million we initially had. So I think that's gonna be the major part of the discussion. I'm not sure we're gonna discuss projects. Of course, we've had uh the town, uh, town hall meetings, uh, the last one ended this past Monday. So we didn't have, it was great turnout in person, hopefully more people watching online. We did have some pretty good questions, I, I would say. And nothing really that really came in that admitted into the projects. I think it's just gonna be for us to give, you know, updates as we proceed if y'all decide to proceed with the, uh, the validation, the voters decide to approve it. So uh that's, that's one measure we, we need to look for, to making sure we give updates if that's the, the route we end up getting approved for.
And just to, we are getting emails about it, um, so there is engagement on it, even though we didn't have a large in-person turnout, there are people definitely engaging on that topic.
So please send that feedback to us, is it, if there's anything we need to change in that, you know, project list so we can present that as well. So. So we want to make sure we capture all everything that you all are getting and everything we've received as well.
So I'm anticipating, and T B S, if this is not correct, but I'm anticipating that part of next Thursday will be a recommended project list that we would approve so that we'd be very clear for us and to the our community and the public that when we're asking you to approve this, this is what's going to happen. Is that is that is that what you're understanding, Mr. Bailey?
That's what I see. That's what we're looking at as of right now, so.
Yeah, I I think that's really important, you know, for us, everybody to be on the same page and for us to be able to give the same message. Kind of like, that's the trust thing, asking to pay money for a long time, so what are you going to get from it? This is what you're going to get from it.
Yes, yes, sir.
And the language, I know you guys was working on language. Is is that something you guys are still working on? Or have you figured out the language of of the ballot?
Language, I think everything is set now. It's ready to be presented to you all.
Okay, and we will get that this one? Okay, awesome thoughts. You guys, thank.
One last thing. I know we got to go, but I want to say, first of all, I want to say thank you for allowing me to serve in the with and and Mr. Poor's absence. Also, we want you, the board members, to know that we have a little token for you. You got gift bags at at your station. So on behalf of the district, again, thank you so much. And so I just want to put that out there.
Thank you. So, yeah, this is a tough board, you know, geez. Yeah, so and so you guys, we are not a paid board. We then we just get paid in love and service and nice little gifts.
Lots of love.
Lots of love and dedication. So with that, you all, I will entertain a motion to adjourn unless you guys want to do a sleepover.
I move that we adjourn this meeting.
Okay, second, any discussion? All in favor? Bye. Good night, Little Rock and beyond.